Julian, do we have anybody on the Zoom meeting making non-agenda public comment?
Yes, we have one hand raised. Actually, we don't have a hand raised.
I'm just waiting a second to make sure.
Okay, no hands raised for public comment.
Great, okay. So let's move into the meat of our agenda for this evening. I wanted to just take a minute quickly. So the next topic is the Housing Action Plan, and we're gonna have a public hearing. So I just want to walk through kind of a sequence of events because we haven't done a public hearing with the Planning Commission for a while, so even I had to think about it a bit. So I'm just gonna walk through this. It helps everybody to kind of keep in mind what the sequence is so that then it goes a little bit more smoothly. So first, we'll have a presentation. Staff and I think Jeff Rango will make a presentation, and then what we should do is focus our next step on the questions that we have for staff and for Jeff that come out of the presentation. And then we'll open the public hearing, I'll open the public hearing, and we'll take public comment on this issue. Then when we're done with public comment, then we'll need to, not, this is not a technically have to, this is how it always goes though, make a motion and a second, and the motion was included in the notes, and then we can have our discussion and debate amongst us, and we can ask the staff further questions as necessary. But I would encourage you to think about trying to ask these questions up front and the debate be later on, okay? Oh, good, I'm on TV now. And then we can make amendments to the motion, we can do whatever we want with the motion and vote on those amendments, that's very normal process. And then at some point, if it's going on for a while, someone may call for a vote and we'll take a vote, or we just get done with our discussion and we'll vote, and that will result in a memo, which is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council that then is signed by the Vice Chair and myself. And I will point out that as kind of a reminder, not often, but occasionally, we have had dissenting opinions included in that memo, so you can think about that as well. So that's kind of the sequence of events, just want to kind of encourage that people remember that so it goes as smoothly as it possibly can. Okay, thanks for indulging me. Let's go ahead and start the conversation about the old business item, the Housing Action Plan.
Great. Thank you Chair Rothman, members of the Planning Commission, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. The first item on tonight's agenda is the Housing Action Plan. The purpose of this agenda item is to receive updates on the final changes made to the draft Housing Action Plan, allow for opportunity for the Commission to ask questions on the final draft version, hold a public hearing on the document, where interested parties will be given seven minutes to provide verbal comment on the plan, and finally, give opportunity for the Commission to deliberate on the plan and formulate a recommendation to the City Council, as was previously described by Chair Rothman. Before I hand the presentation over to our consultant, Elliot Weiss of Community Attributes, we wanted to highlight the intersection between work that has been done with the Housing Action Plan and how that work is passed off to the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update and the housing element and land use element. The Housing Action Plan is not intended to be a document that plans for the future of Sammamish housing supply, and in fact, it lacks context as a standalone document to do so. Instead, the Housing Action Plan is intended to be a review of the status of the city's housing supply, consideration of the city's general housing needs, and identification of housing tools and strategies that will facilitate production and delivery of housing types identified as needed in the community. The strategies and tools of the Housing Action Plan are then passed off to the Comprehensive Plan Update effort, where they serve as the foundation of the city's housing and land use elements, where housing can be evaluated in concert with other critical city components such as infrastructure, and can be calibrated based on land capacity, regional growth targets, and state mandated affordable housing allocations. It is important to note that we cannot fully understand housing and all of its nuances without consideration of other community planning requirements. As a preview, next slide, as a preview to the land use presentation that is scheduled to follow the Commission's conversation on the Housing Action Plan, we have included a slide from that presentation that shows how we crosswalk from the Housing Action Plan into the Comprehensive Plan, and how the strategies and tools formulated with the Housing Action Plan are put to work as the foundation of the Comprehensive Plan and address both mandated affordable housing allocations as well as local market rate housing needs. In this sense, we are setting the tools in place for the market to do its job and deliver housing following market demand. With that, I turn it over to Elliot.
Elliot, we can't hear you. And I'm sorry, I said Jeff, mentioned Jeff earlier and didn't mention you, so thanks for being here. Nope. I can't hear you either, Miriam.
So as we take a minute here to reconnect in the back, thank you for your patience. One of the benefits of hybrid meetings is that people can attend from all locations all around the world. One of the downsides is that occasionally there's a disconnection from the technical side. Miriam and Elliot, can you try something again?
I can hear you, Elliot.
Miriam, could you speak again, please?
Sure. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Elliot, could you try again?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Elliot. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I was saying, thank you for having me again. I'm excited to be here. I know that the agenda is packed and we've sustained a couple delays here due to some tech issues, so I aim to keep it brief tonight. I wanted to give an update on where we're at in terms of the project schedule, and then I just wanted to give an overview of changes that have been made to the Housing Action Plan since the last time we were in front of you, the Planning Commission. So you see on this slide a calendar graphic, much of the project work here is complete, deliverable one. The Public Engagement Plan was submitted in May of 2022 to the Department of Commerce. Last fall, in October, the Housing Needs Assessment was submitted in accordance with the grant requirements. We are now on the Draft Housing Action Plan, which came to you some weeks ago, and tonight we're having a public hearing to recommend the Housing Action Plan for adoption to City Council. The goal here, and as required by the grant contract, is to get the Housing Action Plan adopted by City Council no later than June 15th of 2023. This first slide is just a high-level summary of the types of updates we made, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on subsequent slides, but in general, we made several revisions to the layout of the document. It looks similar, but a little bit different. I'll, as I said, discuss some of the specific changes, but new color palettes or revised use of the color palette, some different use of icons in certain places. We've eliminated certain things like the tiering indicators, and again, I'll speak more about that in a minute. We've expanded the introduction. This utilizes content produced over the course of the project, including through the Housing Needs Assessment, to try to provide a little bit more context in opening up the Housing Action Plan. We've revised some of the Action Plan guidance specifically, and we can certainly talk about that, clarified the themes and the implementation timing on the implementation matrix. Previously, we had said time to implement, which is a measure of how long it might take, and now, and this is related to my comment about the tiers, we're actually talking about when the work to implement might be done. So how quickly is this something that city staff can take on and complete? We've revised graphics really across all the strategies. They're similar, but there are some subtle changes, hopefully to improve clarity. And I mentioned this already, but we replaced the tiers with implementation timing, which we thought provided a clearer explanation of why things had been prioritized or which things were being prioritized. Some of the visual additions, more specifically within the individual strategies, and there are 11 of them included in the Housing Action Plan, we adjusted the types of units produced graphic for inclusionary zoning, we added some graphics for missing middle, we added some graphics as well for ADUs, and we adjusted the units produced by AMI graphic for cottage housing. Largely, this was in response to feedback from you, the Planning Commission, as well as some additional conversations as a project team. Content updates, we added inclusionary zoning to the strategy overview, we added and refined content for partnerships. We heard that need loud and clear from the Planning Commission the last time we met. That one sort of departed from the organization that all of the other strategies benefited from in the first draft that we presented to you. Added tiny homes content on the Strategy Overview page, added cottage housing to the Opportunities page. I know you have packet references here. I'm not going to mention those because I don't have the packet in front of me, but we added examples of the Housing Repair, Modification, and Preservation Program. Similarly to partnerships, we added and refined content for sub-area planning because that is unique and because it's a really big initiative that the city could take on. Its content also departed from those of the other strategies in the first draft, and so we've attempted to expand that content to match more closely what we've provided with the other strategies, and we added a correction about survey questions in the HNA addendum. Next steps, really, it's quite straightforward at this point. We intend on May 9th to go to the City Council to review the draft Housing Action Plan, provided we've got your recommendation to do so, and then the public hearing with City Council would be June 6th, again, to meet the June 15th deadline for Commerce. So tonight, we aim to make ourselves available for any and all questions you might have, and we're looking forward to the conversation.
Okay, thanks Elliot. Anything else before we start asking questions? I will just say, and I'm speaking to myself here as much as anything, but maybe you'll find this useful. Let's try to remember we're talking, it's gonna be hard to segregate the Housing Action Plan from housing and land use, which is our next topic for this evening, so let's just try our best to keep the two of those separate so that we're talking about the right thing. Okay, let's go ahead and start out with questions for Elliot or Miriam or staff on the Housing Action Plan as presented. This could be a quick meeting if nobody has any questions. Maybe you guys just need a little warm-up. Maybe I'll ask a question to give people a minute to think. And I wrote this question down as well, but I believe I noticed in the Housing Action Plan that there was some, and I don't have the whole thing in front of me, I should open up my iPad, but there was some references to permanent supportive housing and emergency housing, and I don't recall talking about that before. Am I recalling that correctly or incorrectly from the Planning Commission standpoint? It's possible that the Council talked about it, that I can acknowledge that maybe I missed that. Has that been discussed with the Planning Commission before? And frankly, even if it has, I don't recall the definitions of that and how it fits into the plan or when it became part of the plan. Can you just give the short version of that?
Yeah, I am happy to, and I'm happy also, David and Miriam, for you to chime in. Both of those housing types are components of the 0% to 30% AMI band for which you will have an allocation from King County, and so I do not recall, Chair Rothman, if we had specifically referenced those terms or not, but an outcome of meeting the allocations or attempting to meet the allocations at the 0% to 30% AMI level may require that you provide for emergency and permanently supportive housing. Typically, I think that would be done through partnerships. Oftentimes, it's third-party providers that step in to offer those services, and so I think that it is implicit, if not explicit, in the strategy that that is going to be a component of need that Sammamish would be aiming to meet through this process. And I believe we have followed up with some definitions from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. I don't have them handy in front of me, but I'm sure we can call them up if we would like to provide those definitions here at the meeting tonight.
And maybe, again, I should have the plan in front of me, I'll do that in a second here. Are there specific numbers associated with those, and how are those numbers determined? And I say that mostly because it seems like that gets into enough detail that it could be very community-specific, and I was just wondering where that came from?
I see David not only has his screen up, but also his hand raised, so I'm going to defer at this point.
So the definition of permanent supportive housing and emergency housing are directly found in RCW 3670A, which is the Growth Management Act chapter, the Comprehensive Plan Element chapter, and there are direct requirements for the city to include to plan for accommodate and remove barriers for its state housing forecast, county-city allocation to provide for the number of units that are identified in RCW 3670A as disaggregated by King County through King County county-wide planning policies. So those types of housing are, and I don't know the genesis of when and how this was added to the Housing Action Plan, however, we do need housing actions and strategies to help us identify how to develop emergency supportive housing and transitional housing. So I'll go down to the transitional housing. Emergency housing is temporary indoor accommodations for individuals or families who are homeless or at imminent risk of becoming homeless that is intended to address the basic food, clothing, and personal hygiene needs of individuals or families. Emergency housing may or may not require occupants to enter into a lease or an occupancy agreement. The next, permanent supportive housing, also defined in RCW 3670A, is subsidized leased housing with no limit on length of stay that prioritizes people who need comprehensive support services to retain tenancy and utilizes admissions practices designed to use lower barriers to entry than would be typical for other subsidized or unsubsidized rental housing, especially related to rental history, criminal history, and personal behaviors. Permanent supportive housing is paired with onsite or offsite voluntary services designed to support a person living with a complex and disabling behavioral health or physical health condition who was experiencing homelessness or was at imminent risk of homelessness prior to moving into housing to retain their housing and be a successful tenant in a housing arrangement, improve the resident's health status, and connect the resident of the housing with community-based healthcare treatment or employment services. Permanent supportive housing is subject to all of the rights and responsibilities defined in Chapter 5918 RCW.
Yeah, maybe I'll just add to this. When I looked at this, there's a graphic that shows the 499 permanently supportive housing, and it's part of the 0% to 30% AMI. That was a new thing. And then I also noticed on here that there's 401 units of emergency housing, which I believe when I read the text and understood, that's not actually included in the numbers that we had previously talked about as our allocation. And I'm not sure I totally understand how that math works, however, I'm mostly more interested in how that, is there anything we should know about how that will be evaluated and how it will be measured in the future as well?
Yeah, so if you recall, the city's charge is to plan for accommodate and remove barriers to production of these types of housing units in the city at the numbers identified with our housing allocation, which is established through King County county-wide planning policy. One of the challenges that we face as a city is a constantly changing environment in which we have to reassess, we're given new numbers by the county. Fortunately, the county has finally made a substantial step in assigning those numbers to jurisdictions where the King County Growth Management Planning Council voted, I want to say, just a few weeks ago, on their recommendation to the King County Council. So now we're just waiting for it to make its way to the King County Council, which we expect to happen later this summer. Ideally, the formal adoption would happen sometime prior to August. However, we believe this will be the number that likely will withstand and be formally adopted into King County county-wide planning policy, that we will need to demonstrate how we are accommodating within our Comprehensive Plan. For emergency transitional housing, generally the best way to think about that is, is any zone that would accommodate a hotel is generally seen to be acceptable for accommodating emergency transitional housing. We can find other zones that don't accommodate hotel and carve out specific zoning controls that would allow for permanent supportive, or excuse me, emergency transitional housing unit types by way of zoning controls and definitions. However, we have been told by guidance from Department of Commerce that the first and foremost way to describe it is, and think about it, is in terms of a zone that allows for hotels.
Okay, I'm gonna stop talking here and let somebody else go. Let's start out maybe down on the end.
David, I have quite a number of questions. First of all, I don't know if you read there a couple of nice articles in Seattle Times about the experience of different cities and the focus, I believe it was on Kirkland, their success and their failure, in particular as far as ADUs. What I read from that, and I just kind of jot down different definition of how we can address possibly shortage housing. One was ADU, the other one was condo, middle housing, multiplex, single-family, townhouses, and abzoning. I know that you covered most of these in the consultant studies, you look at all this. Can you elaborate on some of those items, those types, for instance, abzoning? Did you see that article?
I don't know which specific article I've seen over the last few months, dozens of articles on housing, so.
I cut it out and I'll bring it to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
But generally speaking, the way to think about it, and I believe there's a graphic included in the Housing Action Plan that looks at different housing types as they trend from the less dense, typically more market rate type, diverse housing types, all the way up to the more dense, I wouldn't call mid-rise housing types. And the guidance that we have received from Commerce, which ultimately we have to demonstrate how we're complying with Commerce guidance when we submit our Comprehensive Plan for certification, so it's important to pay attention to the guidance because if we don't, we won't receive certification. But the guidance that we're getting is that really the only form of housing that is predictable to provide for the level of affordability that is below 80% AMI, so 0% to 30%, 30% to 50%, 50% to 80%, 80% to 100%, or excuse me, 50% to 80%, sorry, is mid-rise. So the challenge there, and I think you're gonna hear more about this in the next, the next presentation where we start to talk about the intersection between the HAP and the land use and housing policies or housing elements, is that we are looking at a range of tools, and the purpose of the Housing Action Plan is really to identify what tools and strategies are available to the city so that we can, so that we, and here's the graphic that shows the range of strategies that basically encapsulate missing middle. You can see on the low end, you have duplex, and I think one right below that might also be the accessory dwelling units. Then you step up to duplex, triplex, fourplex, courtyard apartment, bungalow court, townhome, multiplex. So the miss, the point here is that we, our goal was to include a variety of strategies and tools that would allow for development of housing as the market demands it. So one thing to keep in mind is that we're not in control of the market. We can help incentivize or promote things and try and get things to be built, but at the end of the day, if a property owner does not want to sell their property to somebody who will build that type of housing because the land economics of that project don't allow them to hit the profitability that they're looking for, that type of housing is not going to be built. So even if we wanted a certain number of housing types in the city, or you know, a certain type of housing in the city, that's great. That's just a number. The market ultimately is what delivers it. So instead of being hyper-focused on finding a number and then holding ourselves accountable against that number for something we don't control, we instead focus on making sure that all of the tools and strategies that we need to get that housing to market are available, so that if the market wants to build it, it can be built. So I hope that makes sense. So what we're doing here is we're looking at, with the Housing Action Plan, what are the actions, the tools and strategies that the city can use to include in its Comprehensive Plan, in its housing policies, in its land use policies, and ultimately in its codes to help promote all of these types of housing being available in the city with reasonable permitting and reasonable land available for supply?
The second question is that, as you probably know, we've received quite a number of comments from the public, and one of the things that kind of stand out in my mind is that the notion that all these Housing Action Plan, as far as the strategies, as far as the numbers and all that, based on a dictated number from the Growth Management Act mandate, which is what, 2,100 unit between now and the next 20 years, rather than based on a supply and demand in the city. Can you comment on that?
So I would say that one of the reasons why that number's in there, the 2,100 units, is because in order for us to understand the range of housing tools and strategies that we need to include, we need to understand and look a little bit broader than what just the base, what the local need is. So if we were to just look at what tools and strategies were needed to build single-family homes, market rate duplexes, market rate townhomes, market rate condos, market rate apartments, we would be falling short of what our charge is and what our mandate is through the state's House Bill 1220. So what happens is, is we're making sure that we're looking a little bit broader at what additional tools we might need in order to comply with state mandates. We're not saying we're not looking at the local need as well, but at the end of the day, the market ultimately controls what housing is being built.
The third question, I believe that it was Commissioner Chakapandi, and he brought up a good question last time, and that was, how come that this study doesn't list, list of recommendations? What was the reason that, when you typically look at it, AJ, remember that question that you asked? When you look at a study, a technical study, the first page that you see is a list of recommendations. Why the study doesn't have a list of recommendations? Any reason for it?
So I would counter that it does, that it includes. So I would counter that it does, that it includes a recommendation for housing tools and strategies that could be utilized to promote different types of housing in the city.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fayad?
Thank you. Thank you very much for putting all this together and all the hard work and all the great work that was put into that draft. We've been reviewing it for the past few weeks, or at least for me, for the past month or so. One thing that I would like to give as a feedback, just for the city staff, the document that was presented today that shows the delta of the changes that were made, I don't know, maybe I missed it, I didn't see it in the email for the agenda, but it would have been great if it was had, if it was added beforehand, so at least we could pinpoint our study before this meeting. It is a huge document for me to go and review and see where the changes happened. So just a feedback. The presentation that you gave earlier that shows all the changes, the deltas, it would have been great if, maybe I missed it again, if we saw this beforehand.
I guess I'd look to Elliot and to see, was that something that was included in the agenda bill, or was that just with the presentation?
I believe it was just with the presentation, so that's noted, and thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Commissioner Bosworth?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Thank you for the version, the newest version. I can see some areas that have been changed and improved. One of the things that's been challenging for me, I've been following along with the city council as they've been discussing the land use. I don't think that we've had detailed conversations on that topic. And so when I would hear that in city council, it was confusing because it sounded a lot like these, but it's definitely separate. And so my question is, they're definitely obviously in conjunction with one another. So for example, like the TDRs for the strategy, great, but we currently, you know, as far as it meeting our housing mandate, the, we don't have affordable housing percentages for the lower bands, right, in our current code, correct? Like for Town Center, it's 10% at 80% AMI, and so, but that is a strat, so, how do these, so these strategies need to be in conjunction with changes elsewhere in zoning, right?
Yeah, so the intent really is that this will be a foundational tool that Jeff and his team, as they're doing the comp plan update, will then pick up. And so they'll be looking at how land use intersects with these strategies, and as we start to get into the code changes, and with TDR specifically, we're, have it on our work plan to work on it in '24, we can start to look at some of those opportunities that are listed in the HAP and see which ones we should move forward and make adjustments so that the TDR program could, for example, look at lower income levels and utilize that.
Okay.
If I could just add to that, the timing in terms of coordination is actually quite good. We've been working with several communities currently to implement their Housing Action Plans that were maybe adopted a year or two ago, and we're finding that we're going through very similar exercises in terms of things like implementing middle housing, looking at, answering questions about where it should go and why, what the impacts are, what the capacity would be, and doing that without the benefit of doing it along with the HAP. So what we found is there is quite a bit of work to implement strategies from the HAP, and I think that's very typical. But because these projects have some overlap, we've been able to coordinate, and we actually have a graphic in the next presentation that will show how all of the HAP strategies line up with the land use strategies. And I think, I'm confident that the comprehensive planning project will build from where the HAP was, continue to identify those local needs, look at capacity to address those local needs, which we'll be talking about here in a moment, and then that will support the implementation through zoning and code changes.
Thank you. One other question that we kind of touched on, you know, the market, you know, with our 2,100 number, if we put everything in place and the market and everything aligns, and suddenly there is a lot of interest, you know, what happens? Like, are people allowed, you know, say, you make a lot of changes and the home, you know, everyone's on board, and suddenly there are, you know, 4,000 opportunities in the pipeline, you know, at all different levels, you know, is that something that can just happen?
It could happen in theory. I think it's unlikely to accelerate at that rate in the near term. There are still broader sort of macroeconomic or regional economic considerations at play, and you know, Sumamish has a role in the larger Central Puget Sound real estate market that is unlikely to change overnight such that you'd be inundated with new housing development, but certainly the regulations would be in place to support these new types of housing in the locations that are deemed appropriate. And I think that's why what Jeff said about the overlap between these projects is, but really a prime opportunity, because you get to have conversations about infrastructure, and you get to have conversations about transportation and about land use and about housing all at the same time. And really, these strategies, you get to deploy strategically or opportunistically, both to meet the planning requirements that you're operating under, but also to do it in a way that makes sense for Sumamish. So it's not the case there will, it's, I should be careful, given what's going on at the legislature, it's likely not the case that we're talking about blanket upzones. What we're trying to do is deploy these strategies in a targeted manner so that you're getting predictable growth, but growth that also responds to the needs of these various planning frameworks in, under the GMA.
Okay.
I think it's also important to remember that any construction you see takes several years of planning and permitting before you actually see it on the ground. So I think, you know, in all likelihood, it's gonna probably be, don't quote me, because there's gonna be some exceptions, but you know, it could be, you know, five to 10 years before you start to see the impacts of this play out on the ground. And each project will happen individually, so I think that's something to keep in mind as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Brusco?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments and a question or two. First comment is, the changes that I noticed looked really good. I appreciated the enhanced introduction, which very much clarified where the HAP fit in with the comprehensive plan, which had been something that I was struggling with. The other comment is that you may recall, in one of my earlier comments, probably two meetings ago, I said, it's not really a plan, like where is the plan? And I guess I've come, and this is maybe for the public, to the realization that it really is a list of the strategies that can get applied in, you know, as we get into land use and so forth. So when I remove the plan from that name, it all makes much more sense. We've pulled strategies together that we'll be able to apply to our land use in our comprehensive plan. Now for the question or questions, and this really plays off of what Chair Bachman had said earlier about the emergency transitional housing, and then also the permanently supportive housing, and in particular for emergency housing. It's not clear that there's a strategy in the HAP, like, you know, David, if you mentioned about like motels, there's nothing in the HAP that says motels, and the list of the graphic that goes from, you know, single, you know, housing units to, you know, multi-level apartment buildings, doesn't show anything like apart, or motels. And so that seems like a missing part of the strategies and where that would fit in. And while I'm on that, the 401 units, does that then translate into 401 motel rooms that would get spread across the city in some ways? So if you could help understand what, how that all translates into the strategies that we might be looking at here?
So first of all, I want to say thank you for highlighting the Housing Action Plan and the plan component of it. You know, one recommendation the commission could make is to rename the document to be more appropriate so that it was more clear as to what it is. I agree with that comment. The, to answer the question about whether or not there are strategies included that support emergency transitional housing, I'd have to defer to Elliot on that one. However, I will say that the 400 and so units does mean that, from my understanding, is that that is, you know, a number of hotel room type spaces. So based on the definition that we just reviewed, that is the type of space. It doesn't have to have, you know, all of the amenities that a living unit would typically have. It needs to have enough amenity in it that gives someone shelter and space and area to sort of, you know, collect themselves and go back out into the world. So that, I think, is appropriate. However, again, I just want to remind everyone that the charge from the state from HB 1220 is that we plan for, accommodate, and remove barriers to the development of this type of housing. It doesn't mean that the city has to build it, but we will be monitoring progress, and we are required to report out on progress, I believe, at five years after adoption of the comprehensive plan. And if we're not showing progress, or there's a barrier there that's identified, or something along those lines, we're gonna have to reopen our codes and our comp plan, and we're gonna be, you know, sent on a path of compliance. So that's why we're looking at it now and making sure that it's in there. But Elliot, is there anything in there regarding, to your knowledge, regarding, or Miriam, emergency transitional housing?
You want to go first, Miriam?
I do, I really do. Then you come after me. I was just gonna say, I think partnerships are a really key piece of this, and so when you start to look at a lot of the developments that have built, been built in other cities, it's all revolving around partnerships with nonprofits and with service providers, even for emergency housing. And so I think that's where it comes into play. I think also, one of the things that you'll see, I believe in Jeff's presentation, is starting to look at potential bonus parcels, so partnerships with religious institutions that might have some extra land where you could build an emergency shelter or things like that. I've also seen in other cities, in single family areas, they'll have a homeless shelter for victims of domestic violence and homeless families. So there's a lot of different options, but I think really partnerships are at the core of that.
Absolutely, I would echo what Miriam said. I think partnerships is probably the primary strategy identified in the plan, or if we want to call it a toolkit, or something to that effect, we could, in terms of emergency housing, and I would also say permanently supportive housing. I think a couple of other things, just to note or clarify quickly, is that hotels are an allowed use by right in certain zoning designations in Sumamish, so I don't know if there's been an analysis done to figure out how many hotel rooms could be built, if there were market support based on the land available in Sumamish that is zoned appropriately, but there is some capacity there already presumably. And then I would also mention from the Housing Action Plan that we very specifically note that tiny homes are a potential source of emergency housing. I think, and I could be wrong, that that's the only actual text reference in the Housing Action Plan to emergency housing, but I do think that that is another potential avenue in terms of providing some of those units.
Okay, that's very helpful. And then I was gonna ask about the permanently supportive housing, but I would venture to, I guess, I guess, or understand that, Miriam, just like you had mentioned about partnerships, because the permanently supportive housing is not just housing, but it includes some of the other services to support people, partnerships would be needed to be successful with those. And those are included in the Housing Action Plan as it's shown now. Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Bachman?
I want to echo Commissioner Brusco's comments about the introduction and the reformatting. Very easy to read, and the introduction was real key, I think, to clarifying the whole thing. The way that I'm looking at this being sort of a shade tree mechanic is, this is our toolbox, and a tiny home in this context is a tool that we can apply in the land use when we get to that. So we can reach into our toolbox and say, okay, we want to do this, and these are the tools we can pick out of our strategies here to make that happen. So it's really clear that this is strategy and tools, and this is actual land use and comp plan update. So I think I would support changing the title of the document to strategies or something other than plan. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Chakrapandi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I should tell you that this is a fantastic document, and it is, it's really come so well that I could easily read it and understand it. And the points that Commissioner Brusco and Commissioner Bachman did about saying that this is not to be considered as a plan, but to be considered as a set of strategies, was something that my father would tell me, he was a civil engineer, he'd tell me that this is just strategies, don't give us a plan, that's our job to do the plan, so don't give us the plan, tell us what your strategies are, and we do that plan. God rest his soul, but he'd be very happy to hear that his son has finally seen the light. But either as a man, I wanted to address, I wanted to ask a couple of things, and this is where I struggle to wrap my brain around it. In your opportunities, you have given the example of the city can expedite the processing of a rezon or permit, and in the form of incentives, and the city must determine which incentives would be most productive for developers on a case-by-case basis. When you did that, did you have any best practice that you had seen to say, hey, here is a city which actually did it so well, and so we should do it? Or is this generally like an approach that is taken to decide to incentivize builders to come in and work with, work with the city as we are trying to expand? So let me ask, let me pause and let you answer that.
Yeah, this is one, thank you for the question, Commissioner. This is one where I think there are a number of examples, and I'm, I'm going to embarrass myself by not coming up with a specific one on the spot, but there are communities throughout the Central Puget Sound region who have looked at incentives in terms of permitting and entitlements, and how they can streamline things to facilitate the development of certain housing types or affordable housing units. The simplest and most common, I think, is just fee waivers. So you can look at what fees you currently charge as individuals or developers navigate the development process, the permitting and entitlement process in Sumamish, and try to figure out which of those could be dispensed of under which criteria. You know, how many affordable units would qualify a project for that sort of streamlining and those cost savings? But I suppose the answer, the short answer is that many jurisdictions in the Central Puget Sound region have done some version of this, and usually it's a sort of bespoke or tailored approach based on the fee structures applicable in any given jurisdiction.
I can, I can add to that. I agree with what Elliot said, there are a number of examples, and I think that the best way to think about it is, is, I would say that, I'm gonna be honest, Sumamish is not a good example. We've been through a rezon recently that took incredibly long. There's multiple steps to the process, and it's, and it's a political process. Instead, an easier way to think about it is to change your land use, your future's land use map as part of your comprehensive plan, which is one of the work plan items that we have, that would enable upzoning to be done through a criteria-driven hearing examiner process that's not political. And what that does is it then allows you to set different criteria for different public benefit type projects. So if you were building a project and you wanted to rezon to allow for a higher density, but a higher, with a certain percentage of deeper affordability units, well then the criteria is a little bit different for what you have to do to be granted that rezon. So there are, there are tools that we could use that would facilitate and speed up the rezoning process so it doesn't take a really long time and have multiple stops along the way. So that's just an example. I know that multiple cities, you know, every city does it a little bit differently. So if you were to look at the, you know, the city of Redmond or the city of Bellevue, So if you were to look at the, you know, the city of Redmond, or the city of Bellevue, or Issaquah, they all do it a little bit differently. I would say they all have a little bit of an advantage over each other, depending on who you are. But what we're going to be doing with the comp plan is looking at streamlining that through the futures land use map and the relationship to the current zoning map and the process that would be embedded in the code to get you to a different, higher level of density for different types of projects.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Sorry.
Sorry, go on.
Could I just add? Jeff O'Ringo from Framework just shared a really great resource with me from MRSC. So I will send that out after the meeting to the Planning Commission so that you can see that there's some good examples there.
Fantastic. That'll be great. Because if you have that information, then it's like you just said, David, this is something that can skirt between Planning Commission and City Hall, I'm sorry, and the council, City Council. And for us to understand this and grapple with it, it'll be much more easier when we have that examples and look at it. And I understand nothing is apples to apples, and we'll have to extend our brains for that, but that's totally fine. That's great. The second question that I had, and I hope I'm not losing my place, yeah, there you go, on the missing middle zoning, this is great, lots of information that I was really happy with the missing middle zoning, to read about it and learn about it more. You have explained the creation of transition overlays that is there with requirements for inclusionary affordability around existing town center and commercial zoned areas. And I wanted to understand, were there any assumptions made in this creation of transition overlays recommendation that you had? Did you make any assumptions that we should consider for that, the transition overlays? Or is this generally, again, like a recommendation that we should keep in our minds as we are reading through that document?
Jeff, I saw you unmuted. I was going to say, this is truly sort of a conversation for the land use element coming up. A transition overlay is one means of implementing missing middle zoning, and certainly not the only means, but it would be something that you would work through further as you did the comprehensive plan update in the land use element.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. We have some maps we'll show a little later tonight that'll help answer that question.
Okay, great. Then I jumped again. I'm sorry. Those are the two questions. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of overlap, inevitably. I have one question and a statement. I know the statement should wait for later, but I'm going to go ahead now. So the question is, there's been a lot of community comments, public comments, about diving deeper into the details of what the community needs might be for housing. And we've talked about that along the way and discussed that this plan is really a response to the, and you correct me at any point that I'm saying something wrong. I believe what I've heard you say is, this plan is largely a response to the requirements that we need to achieve to keep the city in compliance. So my question is really, I understand that, right? This is what we have to do, and we're talking a lot about what the imposition of rules are going to be on the city. But I think there's clearly an interest in a number, from a number of people, in going further. Has there been any discussion about planning for that? And really, actual discussion and planning for that in the future? You know, work plans or council talking about it, or, you know, maybe in the next two years kind of conversations? Or is that still very nebulous?
That is actively being worked on right now, and we will be previewing some of the analysis that we've been doing to help answer those questions. We also have a memo that goes deeper into the issue of local needs that's currently undergoing internal review, and then we will make that available for the Commission and Council. So we're generally in agreement with many of the comments that have come in. There may be some, a little bit difference of opinion around approach and methodology, but I'd say generally, we're in alignment, and we have a number of strategies that would significantly expand the capacity for a range of unit types beyond the 0% to 80% targets. And we'll be presenting those a little later in the meeting.
Great. Thank you. The statement I wanted to make is, I concur with what others have said, this is great work. It's been massaged a lot along the way, and I really appreciate the graphics. I think they demonstrate an understanding for people or help them to get an understanding that's deeper and more quickly obtained when they, you know, look at some of the graphics we've got in here that you guys have created. I really think it's a great plan. My comment is, my perception is that strategic plans, by their nature, have less specifics in them, and so as a result, get put on the shelf and ignored. And I would really encourage, because of the good work that's been done here, that we try to translate, and I think we will, but still worth saying out loud, translate some of the success from this plan into the other things that we do related to land use and the comp plan and so on. This is a great start to a lot of that, and I really hope that it doesn't become a paperweight, that it really, we utilize some of this good stuff for some of the other plans that we're going to work on. We'll go back and start back on the other end here. Commissioner Savavian?
I want also to mention that you guys, you've done an excellent job, particularly as far as graphics, really, graphics tells a story, and that helps the reader to understand what exactly you're talking about. So compliment to the staff, compliment to the consultant. A couple of other questions that, I don't know who's going to answer it. When you go to, let's say, to the city of Seattle, and you see some developments, and on the bottom, a structure is a safe area, on the top, is a residential, what would that consider to be? Mixed use, or what is considered?
Mixed use.
And Mary Wickers out there, so you know what that means.
Mixed use.
Mixed use. So would that being fallen into category of could be a part of the Housing Action Plan as a strategy?
Definitely. And it falls also in the category of mid-rise. So a mid-rise development would be, could be a mixed-use development that includes a ground floor commercial space and up to five stories of stick-framed, usually the ground floor commercial space would be steel and concrete in order for fire codes to be met, seismic codes to be met. And then above that, you would see, like, you've probably seen many of these being built around the region, five stories of stick-framed, wood-framed building above that that is then, you know, sided and built out. And the building codes allow for that to happen. There's a gap in economy of scale, so if you go taller than that, and I believe you can get up to seven stories, around seven stories with, maybe even eight now with some of the timber framing stuff we're seeing and the modular construction we're seeing. But when you get above that, you have to go to concrete and steel to frame the whole thing, and the cost of that is so much more that most builders, they say, in order to build anything higher than what a five-over-one would allow, you have to build a 12-story building. So we're not talking about 12-story buildings, to be clear. We're talking about mid-rise, which typically would include a mixed-use development, and there are many examples of that around. Some of them done well, some of them done not so well.
Do we have right now, do we have right now any building height limitation? Number of stores?
Yes, we do. It depends on which zone. I believe our highest building height is in the town center currently. I could be wrong, but that's my impression.
The other question is that I know that probably the answer is no. Is there any way that we can list these strategies, maybe create a matrix with pluses and minuses? So you have, you kind of draw some kind of conclusion that maybe because of the socioeconomic conditions or land availability and so forth, maybe strategy number two is the best for Sammamish, based on the experience of the other cities, lesson learned?
So we did, as part of the process, include a much wider range or longer list of strategies. And we went through, way back in the process, we worked with the council and the commission to sort out, first, we went to the community. We had community forums and talked to the community where we received feedback on the different strategies. And from that, we then refined it down, then we brought it to the Planning Commission. From there, we refined it down, they brought it to the council, from there, we refined it down. And ultimately, this list that you see here are those that made it through that process. And our attempt at trying to add the scoring, so to speak, if you will, is in the graphic where it shows the range of affordability, the, I don't know if Elliot could do a tour of what those graphics provide in terms of scoring.
I think, before we do that, I would just say, going back to some of the comments around this being really more of a toolbox, at this point, we think this is the best tools for the toolbox for the city. And there'll be some refinement as you start to talk about land use strategies, as you start to look at the housing element, to figure out which ones are best for the various different land use situations that you'll be exploring, and you can adjust and tweak from there. So I would caution against wanting to remove some or, you know, add others at this point. So I think we've determined that we think this is the best options for moving forward, and that there'll be further tweaked as you progress.
Yeah, we started with around 40, I think over 40, potential strategies that have been employed throughout the region or could be employed in jurisdictions in Washington State. We landed on these 11 as being most appropriate and most impactful, both based on feedback from Sammamish residents, workers, stakeholders, public officials, but also just best aligned with the needs that you aim to meet. And those are needs that residents are expressing in their comments, as well as needs that are going to be mandated, right? So I think it takes all 11 of these, honestly. I think certain ones are going to be better for certain housing types and certain price points, and others are going to be better to produce different housing types at different price points.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Bosworth?
Just, I'll be excited when we get to the point about when we decide, if we decide to rename. I think that was brilliant, because I think that's what I've really been struggling with, is plan is so, such a big word. And what I've struggled with in this is, it's like, you could do this strategy, but you'd also have to do this other thing. And so it seems so dependent on the other things that we're doing. So I would definitely support toolkit or strategy in the name change. So when we get to that point, let me know.
All right.
Yes, I do have questions. Okay. So in the, on page 21, you have this one, which is minimum density or required land use mix. You have a timeline of, implementation timeline of 2023, 2024. I was a little surprised by that. Is that, again, a hope, or is that required to be done by that time? What brought the 2023, 2024 timeline for the implementation?
I think the intent was to align it with the comprehensive plan update. So I think these dates are subject to change. Each of these pages have opportunities for Sammamish, and they're bulleted. And that's the real sort of action plan, if you will, in the sense that those are the most actionable items within the strategies. And some of these bulleted items are comparatively less complicated, some comparatively more complicated. So I think it is certainly something that could be done through this comprehensive plan update through the year of 2024, if you wanted to, say, add a minimum density requirement to R6, which is that third bullet there. You might take on something more complex in the second bullet by saying, develop a zoning overlay with a minimum land use mix. There's more work included in that. While it could be taken on as part of the comprehensive plan, you may, through subsequent conversations, deem that you need more time. But the 2023, 2024 thinking was originally intended to align with that periodic update.
I see. Thank you so much.
Okay, other questions for Elliot or Miriam or anyone else? All right. Thank you for the presentation, answering questions. We're going to go ahead and move on to our public hearing. We may have some more questions for you as we go through that, we'll see. Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing for the Planning Commission review of the Housing Action Plan. Let's start out with public comment related to this topic and related to the Housing Action Plan. Who do we have that wants to make public comment on the Housing Action Plan? And what's the time limit for seven? Thank you. Yeah. Well, let's be clear, the time limit is seven minutes, and you can use less.
I'm Green. Hi, Mary Wickers, Sammamish, 22 years. I'm sorry I had to miss 20 minutes in the meeting tonight, but I had a phone call I had to take. So I will try to speak to the, this is for Housing Action Plan, Housing Needs Analysis Public Hearing, and I get seven minutes instead of three minutes. Okay. First of all, the Housing Needs, or excuse me, Housing Action Plan, I think that it actually incorporates the Housing Needs Analysis as an amendment, so the whole thing will be one document, even though you see two things in different covers there. I wanted to ask about covers, because I didn't understand the vision cover until just real recently, and I think it's important. I would say the things that are most essential in it is the transfer of development rights. Transfer of development rights in itself may not give you a bunch of houses, but what happens is the city is a map, and on the shoulder, which goes from the plateau down to the lake, you have a lot of steep slopes. There's houses building there that should not be being built because it's in critical areas. So you need an internal city TDR program, transfer development rights, where people could sell their development right, they can still own the land and have other uses for it. It would go into like an area like town center, another center, or even another neighborhood that's underdeveloped. And then instead of, then you look at the ratios, whether it's like a one-for-one thing or a one-for-10 thing, or you get it, but you have to put in affordable housing. So if you do that, and you put the density, so instead of like a little single-family home, going through and doing lawsuits to get a reasonable use exception to build a house that takes 10 years to build because it's way too hard and it costs a lot of money, and the city has to do challenges against it and everything, you would not allow the people to build there. Or you could say, if you really want to duke it out, you can, but you would do a transfer of development right. And then those transfer of development right can add extra density to like town center, and if that developer buys those, they can get like so many extra units for them. And I think you could, I don't think that it's been done yet, so I don't know what the stipulations would be, but those credits, you can say, well, we take those, and you'll end up with so many affordable units, or so many missing middle housing or something or other. So there are things that directly impact it and things that aren't. One thing I would say is, you've only got 15% of the city left that's kind of vacant lands that might actually be buildable. And when you're in your last 15%, you have to do really different things than you did for the first 85%. And King County really set the stage for the first 85%. So for example, for missing middle housing, that's the housing that's starting about the end of World War II stopped getting built. And because it's not getting built, we're getting too many of the single-family homes. We have suburbia, and we have McMansions. So we need to go back to those stacked units and other things that David talked about, and the graphic is done for. But what you're hearing is that you need to have the mid-rise, which is the far right of that diagram that they have. And the mid-rise is where you're going to get your actual enough units and density so that a developer can afford to do affordable housing. So I grew up in Bozeman, Montana, I do a lot of those meetings every week, so that's why I'm not here sometimes, but I do them virtually. And they have an economic vitality and an economic development group, and it's really hard to get 10% of the units built to be affordable. And that's affordable at the 80 or 120%. And in Montana, they do a thing, and I've never asked the question here, some of them have to be like owner purchase affordable, and then some of them could be renter affordable. So I don't know if we do a thing like, your 30% owner could just be rentals and not ownership, but we've never clarified that here. But I know in Bozeman, they're doing at this level, it needs to be, it can be, or it can be rentals or either, but most of the ownership is going to be higher. So I just wanted to speak to that. And then I think Elliot said it very well, all 11 things that are in the document, they need to be there. We looked at all of them, we refined them, we did them, we started with more, we looked around. The only thing that I would say probably is, least going to happen, like, I think you should allow tiny home villages, I think you should even allow mobile home villages. The cool thing about mobile homes or something that doesn't have a foundation is you don't get taxed, you only get taxed on the land, you don't get taxed on the house. So your taxes become a lot more affordable. But the reason people don't do ADUs, so in Montana, again, in Bozeman where I grew up, which is about the same size as this city, they have Montana State University. And what they did is they said, we really want to push accelerated accessory dwelling units, either integrated into the house, or put on top of the garage, or freestanding, which is called a DADU for detached accessory dwelling unit. So they had MSU, the School of Architecture, do architecture plans, so like if Commissioner Bosworth wanted to build one, she could go and So like if Commissioner Bosworth wanted to build one, she could go and she'd go, just give me the plans and I'll build one. And it would be pre-permitted, it's super easy. They even made little models that are in city halls, so people who can look at them. It's still a very small number, because a lot of people, A, they can't afford to get the loan to do it, B, they don't want the space permanently there, C, there's either parking or road issues on it, or D, you'll never be able to sell it. What it does make sense for is that you can have like additional income. So like, say you're an older couple and like your kids moved out. So I'm saying, hey, you could just rent to the people and you don't have to do the accessory dwelling unit. I think you would get a lot more units in that way, because the people who, in Bozeman, who stand at public comment, and they're very intelligent and intellectual, they say, I want to do it, I want to do it in my area, you've removed some of the codes so that it is easier for me. But in doing that, it's just not affordable, because you have to put all the elements of a house in this tiny unit. So the cost per square foot to build an ADU is more than it is to build a house. So that's one of the reasons you're not seeing, even people that want to do it, it's just really not turning around. So I just don't think you're going to see a lot of numbers from those. But I think all the other things are very worthwhile of consideration. I like how they're in the document. I know Paul Stickney will probably hit you up on this, but the thing that's really missing from the document is the local needs, because we don't just need the 30, 0 to 30, which is desperately needed, and you need support and partnerships for that, the 30 to 50, the 50 to 80, the 80 to 120, that's about where it becomes market rate. We actually need quite a bit of the 80% to 120% for the workforce people. That's firefighters, water and sewer workers, who you want here if we have an emergency. You don't want them driving in, and when they have to drive more than 20 minutes to get here, they don't stay at their jobs. You want teachers, you want people that can work in dentist office and physical therapy and things like that. So if we don't have those things, you can't do them. So I'm very happy with the package it is, I just hope that we'll have more data for the needs. And we, that was discussed a lot at the city commission meeting on the second part, your second topic that you have, but I wanted to put that in, and I almost did use my seven minutes, so off the top of my head. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else? About on the Zoom meeting?
All right, we have two hands raised. Ms. X. Reid, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, good evening, commissioners, city staff, and consultants. I'm here tonight to talk about the permanent supportive housing plan, which has not been discussed or even mentioned by the Sammamish City Council, with good reason. Permanent supportive housing is a low-barrier, housing-first approach to getting the homeless, substance abusers, mentally ill, physically ill, into housing without prior barriers to leap over, you know, conditions. There's no requirement that these individuals participate in any of the offered services that are, would be available to them. So I found a report from the King County Regional Homeless Authority, and that study showed, it was a, they had two, they were reporting on two mega analysis of studies. One study was 8,000 people, and they found that out of those 8,000, 12% had psych, schizophrenic spectrum disorders. And out of, and there was another study, of 51,000. And of those, the prevalence of psychotic disorders was 21%. So this is what you're going to be dealing with, and this is why probably no one wants to talk about it. Any, I think that wherever these facilities are located, they're inappropriate for the commercial centers, which ha, which are all located near schools. And so, and, you know, then the general public would have contact. Now, I have experience, because I have lived in a bad neighborhood for 20 years before, when I first moved to Seattle, and there were heroin abusers, there were crystal meth abusers, there were three homicides within 50 feet of where I live. One of them involved an active shooter and a police response, and that individual was killed by the police. Another person was stabbed, and, and they all lived in hood housing, Lincoln housing. So, you know, it wasn't like, you know, I don't want to live around these people, but they do have mental health problems. And so I think when you find a location for these facilities, and whoever the contractor is, you're going to have to get an agreement, and, you know, for acceptable standards of conduct in the community. You might talk to Kirkland, because they recently had an agreement regarding La Quinta, and that, that was a hotel. And the community was dead set against it because it was near a school, but you can't stop that. So I don't know how that's going to turn out when people start moving in there. So that's, I guess, about all I have to say. Oh, there's a letter regarding the emergency housing. The, the Sammamish Council wrote a letter to the King County Regional Homeless Authority on March the 15th, and I think they were encouraging tiny homes, and I think that that's a good idea, if they have utilities and plumbing and the whole bit. And they talked about maybe sanctioned encampments would be good, that's tent camping. That won't work, because that's all the housing has to be indoors. So, good luck, you know, I'm looking forward to see what happens next, and thank you for listening.
And before you go, we got a request for you to state your name for the people that might be listening. Can we just get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, you said it first. Diane X. Reid, and I live in Providence Point. I'm your neighbor down the road, just where there's no sidewalk.
Great. Thank you, Ms. X. Reid. And we have another panelist, Mr. Stickney, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Good evening, planning commissioners, Paul Stickney, Sammamish. Have enjoyed this meeting so far. And I on purpose did not prepare a specific comment tonight. I have some notes, but I'm going to go over a couple things. I'd like to thank Commissioner Bresko and the consultants and David Pyle, because I agree, this may not be the right word, but a big weight was lifted in looking at the Housing Action Plan, part of this, as strategies. Because that really is a, trying to mesh all that was tough. But it, but within the Housing Action Plan, there are appendices, and the appendices, I'm doing this off of memory, I may not get the words exact right, but the Housing Needs Assessment is there, the Community Surveys is there, and I believe the public engagement is there. So that is all wrapped up into what the Housing Action Plan is. So I call it the Housing Action Plan and the Housing Needs Analysis. I'm all for the strategies that are most appropriate for Sammamish, and keeping the numbers of the specific application of them out of the Housing Action Plan. I agree with that. I agree they should go into the land use portions, the housing, the elements, et cetera. So the main part of my conversation, which was going to be tied to the HAP and HNA, is mostly going to be about the Housing Needs Assessment, where I'd like to do some comments about getting supplemental information. Oh, and just, it's, it's nice to see the two consultants on the phone have met you guys over time, but Elliot Weiss worked in Sammamish with Chris Mefford for many years during Economic Development's strategic plan, and your maker's cohort, or part of the team that is not here today, Bob Bumford, I can't say his name right, but back in the 2007 comp plan, I'm sorry, Town Center Plan, the 2006 to 8 time, John Owen led that charge, and Bill Trim was a consultant. And I am very familiar with all those guys. And so, good, good people working on this. And thanks for your comments about not beating me up too much over my approach to housing needs. Maybe I do have some things that are a bit in left field, but then again, maybe they're not. And that's what I'd like to start talking about for a second. But before I talk to that, I'd like to say I'm all for a reasonable share of affordable AMIs that Sammamish meets, and that is a mandate, I get it. I've studied it, I know it, don't need to say all that. I also believe that there are internal needs in Sammamish in under 100% AMI and in workforce housing. But the main parts of my conversation are not going to be about that. The main part of my conversation is going to be about need gaps, and all those other three are important and need to be completely addressed. But what I've been calling for is because of the nature of Sammamish, because of its economic makeup, because of the equity and the assets that are here, and the size of the community. There is no other jurisdiction I know of that has studied economic income bands over 120%. But our jurisdiction has done many unique things over the years, based on, A, local needs and, and desires and preferences, and local on-the-ground reality. I'm employing that to say, I still firmly believe that we should take the tact of spreading out of all the households in Sammamish, the roughly 22,500 households, how many fall into each AMI income band, from 0 to 30 at the bottom to well over 500% at the top? And I'm getting some new data that may show that number is closer to 600 or 700%. There's still quite a few folks. And how many houses are there in each of those bands? This is the starting point, in my opinion, it's not the ending point. But what I'm looking for, I think we're going to find several categories in those upper levels that have very significant gaps. And they aren't gaps in the sense that the people can't pay for a house, they're gaps that when they sell, there's not housing and, and they will want to downsize. That's what I'm trying to find in, in, in the higher levels. You know, we have roughly, on the MLS, I've been a Realtor a long time, I've, I've got an area market survey going for Sammamish, and anecdotally speaking, but awfully close, there's been about 1,400 homes a year average sell. I've talked to between 30 and 40 agents over the last two or three years, I know, and I get a range of purely anecdotal, not scientific, that between 10 and 30% of their clientele would have wanted to stay here, but there just simply wasn't supply. So I'm interested in the academic, very clear housing gap analysis, the way the Washington State Housing Needs people did it, the way King County suggested doing it in the last two comp plans, PSRC, the State Department of Commerce. It's a simple academic study to start, not the end, the start. How many households are there in each AMI band? And how many houses qualify for those AMI bands? And by the way, I'm in the weeds on this, I've done homework on this, I've got a recommendation for that study. I suggest we use county assessor data of January 1st, 2021, on the housing side, because it incorporates prices as of 2020, and the market hasn't fallen back that far yet. So in the end, I'd like to see amendments to get this data and consider adjustments to the Housing Needs Analysis, based on local needs for all income levels, and what the desires are for our residents that have equity in their houses to stay, and that can build equity in our community. And the hidden benefit is the inclusionary zoning associated could probably go up a bit for the affordable. Appreciate the opportunity to speak about Housing Needs Assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney, and we have no more hands raised.
Great, one last call, anybody in the room? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. So if someone would like to make a motion to get any discussion started?
We'll go with the motion to get started.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I've got it right here, if you'd like it.
I was going to go into a mad rush of scrolling over. Move to recommend city council approval of the HAP as drafted in Exhibit 1.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded that we recommend approval of this housing action plan to the city council. Any discussion on the topic of making this recommendation?
Is there any interest in changing the name?
You can, you can certainly make that as an amendment. I think we could also make it as a suggestion, too, but I don't, it's, either way.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment that we change it to Housing Action Strategies? And if there was an and?
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recommend changing the name to Housing Action Strategy, with probably some bandwidth for adjustment along the way.
I just want to note that the, so going back in time, we have our Homegrown, which was a strategy, housing strategy. We, we have an alternate that, we have friendly alternate that we would propose, which was Housing Diversification Toolkit. It's not a strategy necessarily, but it's a set of tools that are available to help diversify housing, consistent with public comment, consistent with, with what our comprehensive plan objectives are, consistent with the fact that our, our housing supply that we have was largely set up by King County and is one type of housing, that, that really is the, the purpose of this document, so that, that's our friendly proposal.
I would be okay with that.
Would you like to, yeah?
Also amend my amendment.
Adjust your, we'll just say, we'll just say we adjust your amendment to
Okay.
Housing Diversification Toolkit. Yeah?
Thank you.
And second person, okay with that?
Oh, I'll second that again.
Okay. Sort out how to track that in the minutes. Any comments on that, specifically on the name change?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of this amendment, which is just to change the, recommend changing the name to Housing Diversity, Diversification Toolkit, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay. Going back to the original motion to recommend, any discussion about the plan itself and what we're recommending to the council? Let's, let's start at this end this time. AJ, go ahead.
No, no, I don't have any, or, no comments?
Nope. Anybody down here? Really? Maybe I'll just say, I think there's certainly probably some opinions about things that could be done differently here, in terms of what the community needs, based on the public comment that we received. And I hope that the council will recognize that there are probably some other things we could do that are selfishly for ourselves and less focused on compliance. that are selfishly for ourselves and less focused on compliance. However, having said that, I think we do, I am for me, this is a fault in some ways, but I'm far more interested in the next part of this meeting and in the comp plan and in the ordinances and the code changes that we'll make. Because to me, that, this is informative and it's great work. But those are the things that will make the difference in the community. And so that's where I really look forward to that discussion because I think that really gets into the, how do we make some of these things happen and happen correctly in Samamish for a change? So I support this. And I do think that we need to continue the work to refine some of the particularly options for seniors. And I hope that we will do that. I really would love that to be part of this plan. But in the meantime, I'm actually far more interested in moving on and getting into the details. Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to call for a vote. So this is approving the motion as amended to approve the Housing Diversification Strategies Plan, no, not plan, Housing Diversification Toolkit. Sorry, to the city council. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, no? Great. Thank you, everyone. Sorry for the tongue twisting.
Sure, Bob, if I may, I I just want to speak to public, to the public comment you heard tonight. We we are very, this is the first time I've heard constructive feedback on how you might achieve calculating that that number. I'm very intrigued by the comment that was provided and I asked the commenter to please send an email to us outlining their methodology so that we can evaluate it. As this is the first time I've heard a proposed methodology brought to public comment. Thank you.
Great, thanks, David. Okay, let's move on to our next item on the agenda. Sure, if you want to, yes. Everybody okay with taking a five minute break?
I would like to be excused today, if it's okay.
So let's go ahead and take a five minute break. So on my phone, that's 7:28 plus five minutes, 7:33 ish. Let's be back here. Thank you, everybody. Okay, is everybody ready? Let's get going on the second part of our meeting this evening, which is to jump into the conversation about land use. So I'm sorry, who's 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 doing the presentation? Is it David starting out and Jeff or how's it going?
Just turn it right over to Jeff. We'll just get moving on it. I think Jeff has a presentation for you. So Jeff?
Welcome, Jeff.
Soon as he's he's able to share his screen, it might take a sec here.
Yep, just thanks, just getting it set up here. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Jeff Arango with Framework. And we are going to be presenting tonight foundational guidance for land use alternatives. And I'm joined by David, who's going to help me with some parts here. Sorry. Slide. Okay, so we'll start with meeting goals. And broadly, we're here to have a discussion tonight around land use strategies, particularly housing strategies that should or should not be included in our land use alternatives. We're not here tonight to recommend these strategies per se, but we have put together a suite of options that address both the growth targets and local needs. Our analysis for local needs is still ongoing. We will preview some of that this evening as well. And we will present housing capacity estimates by housing type and affordability. David Pyle drafted some land use principles that we're going to be presenting here tonight. There's been a bit of refinement from the city council. One of the takeaways that I think is important to highlight is that the city does not currently have capacity to meet the affordable housing mandates. And we'll need to make land use adjustments for compliance. And I'll get into that more later in the presentation. Principles will guide decision making and land use alternatives and selection of a preferred alternative, which could be one of the alternatives or a combination thereof. So we're looking for input on housing strategies for inclusion in the land use alternatives. This will allow for consideration of things like transportation and capital facilities and will eventually help decision making for the preferred alternative. Growth targets overview. Washington State Planning Law starts with the Growth Management Act. It filters down to the Puget Sound Regional Council, Vision 2050 and the multi-county planning policies. That then filters down to the countywide planning policies and those where the growth targets are administered and then down to the city's comprehensive plan. It's also informed by training and guidance from the Washington Department of Commerce as well as the Puget Sound Regional Council. We need to meet all of these mandates in order to have our plan be determined to be in compliance. Now, this is a graphic we put together to show the life cycle of comprehensive planning. And I think there's a tendency to think of the comprehensive plan as just the process of developing the actual plan itself. The plan is intended to be for 20 years, being realized by 2044. And the red bar indicates the implementation phase, which you can see happens throughout the 20 year period. The implementation phase could address things like subarea planning, further consultation with developers and property owners, negotiating developer agreements, implementing further tailored incentives, promoting things like the TDR marketplace, that was the subject of earlier public comment, design review programs, greenhouse, green building code, adoption and affordable housing partnerships. Not to say that this is necessarily the list that we'll be looking at, but this gives you an idea of some of the things that we'll be working on. So the comprehensive plan process to adopt the plan is really about setting the stage, establishing the capacity. But it does not mean that we can just sort of adopt the plan and assume that things will play out the way we'd like them to. It's going to take continued effort and refinement. We're going to have to monitor, make changes down the road. And also, at 10 years, we get to do this all over again with a new periodic update. Growth targets overview. On the left hand side is the existing City of Samamish zoning map. The yellow colors and orange colors highlight residential development, mostly single family. The map on the right identifies additional unit capacity within the city based on the buildable lands analysis done by King County. That process develops, includes the methodology for assessing vacant and underutilized parcels and those that are more likely to redevelop, which is the basis for capacity. We can then take these numbers and dial the capacity up and down based on the different housing strategies. And that's what we'll be presenting to you in a moment. And back to the earlier slide where I mentioned that the city does not have enough capacity to meet affordable housing targets. That's because while we do have generally 2,100 units of capacity, much of that is in the R zones at lower densities than would be feasible to meet the affordable housing targets. This graph shows the housing targets from King County by income band, starting with 0 to 30% for both permanent supportive housing and non-permanent supportive housing, 419 units between 30 and 50, 232 between 50 and 80. And then not directly included in the target, but we will have to demonstrate our ability to accommodate it, emergency housing at 401. You can also see the income bands or the monthly affordable housing cost by income band here down on the bottom left. So as I stated earlier, this process will ident- will address the affordable housing targets as well as local needs and desires for the range of housing needs for the life cycle of of the population of Samamish. This is informed, of course, by the Housing Diversification Toolkit and some of the outreach that we've done as part of the comp plan and other city efforts. We had a planning summit series event on housing. There was a statistically valid survey done on housing. And then the housing element background material, which we're currently working on and will be previewing here in a moment. So the housing analysis for local needs. I just wanted to step back a little bit and talk a little bit about the growth targets and how they relate to local needs. So the growth target process really starts with a statewide 20 year population projection from the Office of Financial Management. That projection then goes down to the counties at the county level. And then the counties determine how to divide that up among the various jurisdictions. Theoretically, that population projection accounts for all of the anticipated growth in population within the state. The cities can and should, if necessary, plan for additional growth to identify additional local needs. And because the city's growth target is relatively low compared to some peer communities, that's resulting in a target that is primarily affordable housing. Periodic updates, as we're undergoing now, are an opportunity to define local needs and desires through engagement, communication and data analysis. We believe that defining a very specific additional housing target beyond that mandated by GMA is not necessary to address local needs. I think we should focus rather on identifying opportunities to address local needs. And I think some of those are quite obvious and have been mentioned in some of the recent public comments. And I'll touch on here in a moment. And the biggest factor is that Samamish has typically one type of housing. It's relatively large and typically quite expensive. I looked on Zillow quickly before the meeting. I think there was six multifamily units available in the city. And even though we're kind of in a weird housing market, that's extremely low. And I think gives us insights into some of those local needs and gaps in housing supply. And that kind of speaks to the next bullet, that I think those those needs and those gaps are already well defined. Housing strategies should focus on creating opportunities. Housing strategies are implemented with relatively broad policy and regulatory approaches. But we can't get to the level of dictating specifically what happens on each parcel that's determined by the market. But we can create significant opportunity to address what we already know are some of the gaps and local needs. Implementation strategies will continue well after plan adoption and likely need refinement to achieve desired outcomes based on learned experience. That is to say, we will not likely get everything right in order to result in the plan being implemented based on community desires. But with continued effort and refinement, I think we can get there. So this is the preview of identifying local needs. This looks at housing size mismatch. So on the left hand side are the number of housing units and number of households that fit within that category, right? So this would be one person households of one bedroom units, so on and so forth. And you can see that in some cases, there's a mismatch which is highlighted over here on the right. And not surprisingly, what we see is a pretty significant deficit in one and two bedroom units. Again, this is just based on household sizes compared to house sizes or unit sizes. And there's a surplus of larger units, three, four, and to a lesser extent, five bedrooms. The challenge here would be to predict how many of these households actually would like to downsize. And while I have no doubt there are households looking to downsize and are likely finding it challenging to stay in the community. I have heard those same stories in many of the communities that I've worked in where longtime residents have been forced to move elsewhere to find the housing need. It's not unique to Samamish, but it may be more extreme here due to the, you know, singular, relatively singular type of housing. So again, we could take this data and try to make some estimates or assumptions. But in terms of how many of those folks might want to downsize. But again, if we focus on opportunity and making more opportunity to create one and two bedroom units, I think we can make significant progress towards addressing the local needs. Okay, this looks at housing affordability by income band, and this is quite interesting. So here are the up above is renter household, which is a little bit easier to conduct for this analysis because it's relatively straightforward of household incomes to rents for the owner. It's a little bit more challenging because there's a lot of assumptions that go into how people purchase a home, things like down payments, sort of wealth versus income and things like that. But with that said, when you look at the renter households, there's a relatively small gap in 0 to 30% AMI. And that is about 47 units. But generally, we don't see a lot of gaps. And I think part of that in the low affordability levels is because there simply isn't a lot of housing at that affordability level. Therefore, it's difficult for people to live in Samamish at those income levels. So it doesn't identify a a big match. And I think the affordable housing target is really based more on regional need necessarily than than needs within current residents of Samamish. If you look on the owner's side, we do find, and again, this I think was another subject of public comment, a deficit of 434 units in 100% or greater AMI. So it is identifying a gap in some market rate units that are not captured in the growth target. And then this is the last preview slide. And again, we will be producing a memo that will summarize this and and a lot of other information and data. But looking at local needs based on inflow workers, so those are folks that work in Samamish but do not currently live in Samamish, and these are by income band. So from 0 to 30%, there's 422, 50 to 80, we have 1930, and then 120, 300, 3,993. And again, kind of like the issue with the household size mismatch, it's difficult to predict how many of these workers actually desire to live in Samamish. There's likely many that do, but there could be other reasons why folks may want to continue living where they are. So again, we could come up with some, some assumptions and some targets and create opportunities and develop a monitoring program and make refinements. And I think we could have a lot of success in terms of providing more opportunities for people to live and work in Samamish. So land use principles. We developed 13 land use principles. We did get some feedback from the council that's been refined. And I will not read them verbatim, but I'll just touch on some highlights. Move my Zoom screen so I can see it here. We first need to be responsive to all of the mandates from the state, regional and county requirements, things like meeting the growth targets in terms of capacity. We want to be complimentary to existing patterns of development. So that the fundamental development pattern and general distribution of urban intensity of the city adapt to change, be additive of single family neighborhoods. And, you know, all of our assumptions are based on the vacant and redevelopable parcels. And in doing work in similar communities, in some cases that included a market study or a projection of of how much middle housing would be built, say, in a single family neighborhood. It tends to be relatively small and tends to, again, focus on those underutilized and vacant properties. So we would not expect to see large scale redevelopment of existing single family homes because they represent quite a bit of value, economic value. The fourth one really starts to get at the issue of local needs for local residents, address living arrangements that can support their stage of life, physical capabilities and financial means. We want to leverage infrastructure to minimize costs. So looking at developing in areas where we have capacity, perhaps areas that already have impervious surface and infrastructure associated that we could improve through redevelopment. We want to enhance existing zoning strategies, incentivize the redevelopment again of those areas with impervious surface. We could actually improve water quality and reduce impacts on stormwater and things like that through redevelopment because those older developments do not have kind of the same approach that we might take today. We want to have diverse housing types that are blended into existing neighborhoods, increase densities sufficient to promote the deep affordability, be within walkable proximity to amenities, features, services and jobs, access to transit, promote equitable access to amenities as well. Be responsive to existing constraints, things like critical areas, which was mentioned earlier. We want to promote things like transfer of development rights. We want to minimize displacement, which is a requirement now under the Growth Management Act. Want to periodically monitor for effectiveness and make changes as necessary. Really gets back to kind of the programmatic aspect of comp planning that goes well beyond the adoption of the plan. Okay, so that kind of set the stage. And now we'd like to go through some of the strategies that we've developed for your consideration. We have them broken down into terms of strategies for compliance. Again, primarily focused on mid-rise construction because of the guidance of the state. Again, we can look at other options and we just have to be able to justify that that will meet those affordability requirements. And then we have a range of strategies to address local needs and desires, things like the middle housing overlay, large lot cottage housing, middle housing around new neighborhood centers, planned residential development and accessory dwelling units. And these sort of capacity for each of these strategies can be dialed up or dialed down. Before we get into the other two strategies for compliance, I just wanted to highlight the concept around new neighborhood centers. The current thinking is that we might set something up like this in in terms of a policy framework in the plan, but we might not actually get to the point of designating new neighborhood centers. And there could be a variety of mechanisms for that to happen, whether city-led efforts or subarea plans or even proposed by developers as part of a larger scale development. But we currently have kind of three types of centers, at least in terms of our perception. We have the Town Center, which is the primary, the commercial centers, which are Pine Lake. Um, at least in terms of our perception, we have the town center, which is the primary, the commercial centers, which are Pine Lake, uh, Clahani and um Inglewood. And then we have the smaller uh center there down on the Parkway, um, which has uh neighborhood business owning it is a bit smaller scale. So again, we could look at kind of introducing some new centers and access to services within our parts with Samamish. But might be something that gets implemented after the adoption of the plan, but curious, you know, for feedback on that. Okay, so now we're we're going to look at the strategies uh for compliance. So this is uh really focused on the affordability requirements. And uh we're somewhat limited, at least initially, in the areas within the city that currently allow mid-rise construction. And those are the town center and the centers, and those are highlighted on the map in the upper right. Uh, in the bottom right, um, is the baseline capacity compared to a range of capacity that we would get um through increasing density from perhaps between eighty dwelling units per acre and a hundred dwelling units per acre. That would give us a baseline capacity of just under thirteen hundred units in the town center, six hundred units in the existing uh centers outside the town center. And that's based on a density of eighteen units per acre, which is well below a typical mid-rise uh building. And if we were to go with eighty units an acre, we'd end up with a capacity of thirty, just under thirty-three hundred units and a high capacity of uh just over thirty-eight fifty. So it's a fairly significant increase. And part of the strategy here is that you need to be able to increase the market rate units in order to offset the cost of the affordable units. And a traditional inclusionary program like we have in the town center where, say, ten percent of the units get built as affordable housing uh would not work in this case because of the high proportion of affordability that we do need. Um, this is also going to be predicated on one of the key strategies from the housing diversification toolkit, and that is partnerships. Um, in order to provide these levels of affordability, it's going to require partnerships with affordable housing providers. Um, but the benefit is the increased market rate uh development. And that partnership slightly going to involve land, uh perhaps uh as the contributing factor to allow the affordable housing and also to uh kick in the market rate uh bonuses for housing and potentially for commercial space as well. So these are just a couple of examples of mid-rise uh construction. Thornton Place, which is one of the first TOD projects in uh Seattle. I was involved in this project when I first moved to Seattle in two thousand eight. Um, uh, doing some um sustainability planning. And this is a redevelopment of an old King County Park and Ride, which is uh we have a King County Park and Ride in Samamish. We're going to talk about in a moment. And then down below is a mid-rise, one of the first mid-rise uh projects in downtown Redmond that now butts the new park that they recently built. Um, and these, again, with the guidance of the state, are the only uh housing types that would address the deep affordability unless we can demonstrate otherwise. And this has the highest amount of unit capacity. Um, and these are some examples of mid-rise construction. There's actually the Sky Apartments. Um, and even though the densities within the district are lower, um, this building, the Sky Apartments, I think, is drawing density from some of the land where the metropolitan market is as well. So the actual net density of that project is close to a hundred units an acre. And it does have thirty affordable units. Um, the Bale Apartments in Issaquah, um, the Park Apartments in Kirkland, about a hundred units an acre. And then Vada Apartments at a hundred and thirty-three dwelling units per acre. I think it's also good to think about mid-rise buildings in terms of kind of building types. Uh, density is just a simple calculation. It depends on how much land you have. But regardless of what the numbers say, a mid-rise building kind of has that similar kind of experience as a pedestrian and and within the urban environment. Okay, the next strategy for compliance is what we're calling bonus parcels. And um since the commission has had some good suggestions on naming, if you have any suggestions uh for a better name for bonus parcels, we're all ears. But uh bonus parcels are essentially religious institutions and county or city owned parcels. Um, and those are identified in the map on the right. Um, and as I said, there is a a large uh King County Park and Ride, a number of religious institutions also identified. Um, and there have been some very successful programs uh putting affordable housing uh in these sites. Bellevue has a program and we'll show some examples in a moment. Uh, the baseline capacity of these uh sites is between zero and a hundred and eighty-five. And if we were looking at a density of forty units an acre, it would be around fifteen hundred units. And high would be sixty dwelling units per acre. And the expectation is that these projects would likely be a hundred percent affordable. So there would need to be a a market sort of uh rate housing offset for that.
Hey Jeff, can, yeah, on our screens, we really can't see the bottom there. I don't know if there's a way to, we can see the images fine, but the numbers end up getting kind of hidden if there's any way. Yeah, maybe you can't do anything about it.
It's the 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 banner from the share screen um that has all the controls is blocking it for us.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can fix that, but at least recognize we can't see the numbers.
Okay, apologies. Uh, we'll have, we'll send the presentation out uh after, and and I think these are also maybe um included in the memo, but apologies about that. Um, I'll just read them off at the bottom. Basically, we have three categories, baseline, which is under current zoning, low um and high. And low is forty dwelling units an acre or fifteen hundred units, high is sixty dwelling units an acre or twenty-three hundred units. And um, uh, these also assume that the existing development on the parcels will remain. So we did some calculations based on um existing buildings and things that would be development limitations in order to create these numbers. So they don't, they do not assume wholesale redevelopment of these sites, but rather additive uh constructions. Okay, and then some of the housing types include mid-rise apartments, courtyard, uh, mid-rise buildings, courtyard apartments, which is another kind of variation of the mid-rise. Walk-up uh potentially mass timber buildings. And there's an eight-story uh mass timber building being constructed right next to our office. Uh, point access blocks, which are smaller scale, multi-story buildings that tend to be very efficient. Uh, and then larger scale middle housing communities, moderate to high amount of unit capacity. Um, and this is one where there could be perhaps a little bit of variation on the the type of of housing units and buildings because it's sort of a different uh equation than the uh redevelopment of the centers. And here are some examples. This is in Saint Luke's Lutheran Church in Bellevue. Um, and it's sixty-three units at thirty to eighty percent AMI enabled by House Bill thirteen seventy-seven. Velocity Apartments, uh, this is next to the South Kirkland Park and Ride, fifty-eight units, thirty to sixty percent AMI. Includes communities based in amenities for families and children. And then down below the Luther Memorial uh Lutheran Church, um Compass Broadview, fifty-nine units, thirty to fifty percent AMI and includes supportive services as well. And this is uh on the the church land. Okay, so those are kind of the two primarily, primary strategies um related to compliance. Um, and now we're going to get into some of the strategies that would address primarily local needs. So we've developed two versions of what we're calling a middle housing overlay. This would be an overlay applying primarily to single family and other residential neighborhoods that would allow middle housing, uh, which again are things like duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, multiplexes and similar. Um, but generally done at a scale that would be compatible with single family neighborhoods. And there's opportunities to integrate design standards or design guidelines, things to ensure uh compatibility uh with existing neighborhoods. Um, we've done two versions of this map. And uh one i- in the lower left is a quarter mile walk or roll from uh centers, transit, schools and parks. Uh, the second version is for a half a mile. And the reason that the shapes are so amorphous is because this is a network-based analysis. So if there isn't a road to connect some just to a destination, even though or a parcel, even though it's within a quarter mile, it won't show up in this map. And what's uh what I really like about this strategy is it becomes dynamic, right? So if the city or developer makes a trail connection or a street connection, then the overlay kind of changes with it. And so it's a way to really connect infrastructure connectivity, which we heard a lot about at our transportation event during the summit. And we know is an issue, helps with traffic control and walkability, um, but it'd be dynamic system in that way. Um, and again, we can dial these up or down. We can go, um, you know, shorter distance, the further distances. We could vary the densities a bit, but I'd be a little cautious because there is uh kind of a minimum of density that I think makes middle housing work, but it's certainly something we could look at. Um, and we could also vary the distances by different types of facilities. So things like centers, transit, schools and parks, we could, you know, some could be a quarter mile, some could be a half a mile. And then if, you know, a new uh center is identified or a new transit stop or a new school, then again, the overlay would would start to apply in those in those areas. So it starts to connect the dots among multiple uh multiple elements of the comprehensive plan. Okay, so apologies if you can't read the numbers, but we've run the numbers. And again, we're only taking into account the parcels that were identified by King County as likely to redevelop. Um, we're not assuming, you know, redevelopment of existing, you know, higher value, higher value, single family homes. Uh, baseline for the quarter mile walk role is five hundred and fifteen units. And again, that would primarily be single family housing. Uh, the low estimate based on uh increase of density to twelve units of it, an acre would be sixteen hundred forty-eight units and a high of two thousand uh five hundred and twenty-eight units at eighteen units dwelling units an acre, which is a pretty typical middle housing density. If you expand those buffers out to a half a mile, you end up with a baseline of seven hundred and fifty-eight units. Again, primarily single family housing because a lot of the uh higher density R zones that do allow middle housing uh are relatively built out, have minimal capacity. Um, with the half mile at the low density, lower density of twelve dwelling units an acre, you end up with about twenty-five hundred units of capacity and high, you end up with thirty-nine oh one. So again, in terms of creating opportunities, um, these uh this strategy, even though it doesn't encompass a lot of the single family neighborhoods in Samamish, would bring the density up uh, you know, significantly um in order to create opportunities for smaller units, address things like downsizing and so on and so forth. And these are just a few examples, uh, older one in Seattle near Garfield High School. This is a newer uh vertical triplex here on the lower left and then uh fourplex, older fourplex here on the right. Um, and again, we can incorporate any sort of measure of design standards and guidelines um that we would, that we think uh will make the projects a success. Uh, there is the potential for the middle housing to address some levels of moderate affordability. So um again, like a typical inclusionary zoning, if you're building ten units, perhaps one or so could could be in the kind of moderate affordability range of zero to eighty or zero to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. Something we can definitely look at. Okay, next we have large lot uh cottage housing. Cottage housing is a uh a single family typology, small in scale, typically done uh with multiple units on a single lot around common open space, uh, common parking areas. Um, they can sometimes have community buildings, uh places for people to gather. Uh, there's some variations that are kind of more co-housing and some are, you know, more standard kind of few simple uh arrangements. The map on the right uh is just really a very simple analysis that we did to identify parcels over uh half an acre. We'll be going through this and filtering out, you know, parcels that uh are not developable. But we do think there is uh potentially significant capacity and perhaps the ability to integrate cottage housing while maintaining the existing units, which could help kind of minimize changes within neighborhoods. Um, so again, this is one that's likely hard to quantify in hard numbers in terms of how much we might see. But with a range of incentives and some communication programs and outreach and work with developers, um, we definitely see this as a viable strategy. I was the um planning director for the city of Langley on Woodby Island for three and a half years. And I think uh Langley had one of the first cottage housing codes. And there's some local architects that were very involved in those projects. And there's several great examples, as are uh some uh more close to home. Um, the example in the upper right is from Kirkland. And again, you can see kind of they're oriented kind of around usually a common green space, landscaping, social spaces, um, nice architectural treatment, front porches, uh, common parking areas. Um, this uh example is from a town in California. Um, and then down below, a nice example from Bainbridge Island. So um, I think a lot of these uh indicate that this could be a viable strategy for Samamish. And a great, you know, potential for downsizing, they tend to be one and two uh bedroom units. Uh, middle housing around neighborhood centers, this is what I had introduced uh in kind of the first strategy slide. These are a couple of examples from Bainbridge Island. Uh, this is Rolling Bay, um, if you're familiar with Bainbridge. But, you know, these would be smaller than the existing centers, likely more neighborhood based, walkable, could have things like restaurants, small stores, uh, services. Um, so again, something we're likely to set up in the plan, but maybe won't designate specific centers as part of this supper. And then these are just, again, some of the same housing examples in the townhouse example there on the upper hand, upper right. Um, and again, this would kind of go along with potentially the middle housing overlay strategy when, when and if implemented in the future. Uh, planned residential development is basically a flexible approach to development in order to get better outcomes. It's uh that are aligned with kind of community priorities. It's typically suitable for larger sites, uh, but you can require things like unit mixes. Uh, typically have higher quality, things like streetscapes and parks and open spaces. Um, there are obviously some planned uh developments like Clahani and the Laurel's within Samamish already. Um, there are probably, you know, from the map on the right, which identifies parcels over five acres. You know, not not likely huge opportunities for this, but it is something that we looked at as part of development regulation phase two and decided to table it at that time. And so we're just kind of bringing it back as one of the potential strategies that could help us diversify housing in the city and uh ensure that we get broader public benefits as part of these developments. Um, and again, it can include a range of housing types. It can include a range of affordable levels, likely in kind of the higher uh affordability ranges. Be difficult probably from fifty to thirty percent. But again, if there was a partnership with an affordable housing provider and there was flexibility for a different, you know, building or housing type, you know, it's it's not out of the question. Um, these are some examples, uh, upper two are from the lookout in uh Lake Shalan. It's up on the hillside overlooking the lake. It's got kind of a new urbanist um kind of aesthetic to it, but I have been there. It's quite nice. Um, and then down below, again, another kind of new urbanist development in Saint Charles, uh, Missouri. And you can see kind of the lush streetscapes, the small kind of neighborhood parks, stormwater facilities designed as amenities. Um, and you know, fairly dense housing on smaller lots, uh, rear parking access and those sorts of things. It's it's kind of has the characteristics of an older, more traditional neighborhood. Uh, accessory dwelling units, um, another, you know, popular strategy, something that's allowed in the city currently. But like many cities, we're not uh seeing a high production. You can see the historical ADU permits down on the bottom of the screen, which you may not be able to read. But basically, um, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, there's been ten developed and one permit uh so far in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the map on the right, kind of like the map for cottage housing, we just simply identified parcels that have a single family home and uh would be eligible to put in a uh ADU. For some properties, and this was an issue we looked at in development reg space two, the houses are fairly large relative to the lot. So things like a detached ADU are not feasible. Whether that's a main driver of ADUs not being developed, it's hard to say. Uh, likely not, because I think there are other opportunities, but that is an issue. Um, and just a reminder, um, and uh to note for some of the new commissioners in development reg space two, we did uh put in uh limitations on floor area relative to the size of the lot. So every new lot in Samamish will have a space for an ADU and will get an FAR exemption for a detached ADU as an incentive. So there are some new incentives in place and and hopefully they will uh along with whatever we do as part of this process, help us pick up the pace in terms of accessory dwelling units. So again, this is a difficult one to assess in terms of what we're likely to see play out. But uh for some of these strategies, we might uh consider going with a target, um, which would be something that we would, you know, more aspire to. And um, you know, in looking at the parcels that would be eligible, if we had a target of, say, five percent over the next twenty years, that would be a thousand accessory dwelling units in the city, far, far outpacing historical ADU permits. And then again, another potential strategy for downsizing, uh, you know, some folks, instead of downsizing, maybe will build an ADU and and live in the ADU and, you know, younger family members, uh, you know, use the the main house. Um, so it can be a strategy around downsizing, either using your existing house or or otherwise. Uh, but again, not a lot of production. And I think there's a lot of things we can do from pre-approved plans to permanent incentives, fee reductions, communication strategies um to help, you know, increase production over time. Again, uh probably more in the moderate affordability uh range, kind of by nature. There could be, you know, some strategies for deeper affordability, but likely not to be one of our core strategies for compliance. And these are some examples of some detached ADUs. This is from, I think these are both from Seattle, but these are kind of backyard nicely uh done. Detached ADUs, this one standalone, this one above the garage. Um and so ADUs like these would would be exempted. Uh under the code developed as part of uh development reg space two. So there's a significant incentive. Okay, and then this uh chart, which was shown in the beginning of the hap, uh I shouldn't call it the hap anymore. The uh earlier presentation. Uh and it basically just summarizes the capacity. So the dark bars are the low ranges and the lighter bars are the high ranges based on uh what we presented. And I'd like to call particular attention to the local needs and just highlight how much uh collectively, capacity wise. We could be creating uh to address local needs and housing diversification here. We're talking in the thousands and thousands of units. And uh this is a relatively streamlined proposal, particularly like things around middle housing where we're looking at just proximity to certain areas. Other communities have done this citywide. It's not something we're currently considering, but that is some, just to say that we can dial these up or down. And we can match this up with some of the additional analysis that we're doing on terms of uh quantifying local needs and that we look forward to coming back and presenting to the council here. Uh likely in May. And then this chart shows the synergy between the land use strategies. The housing uh diversification toolkit strategies. And then the numbers indicate the land use principles, which are highlighted at the bottom of the slide, which may be cut off from your screen. So you can see each of the strategies uh correlates with a number of the strategies from uh. From the hap and then the land use principles kind of nest in there too around applicability. So again, I think uh we've been coordinating strongly with uh Elliot and the city. And feel like we have good synergy between the two projects. And again, from my experience, implementing housing action plans in a number of cities. You know, I think we're well ahead of the game in terms of correlation between the strategy element and the implementation element. Not to say we don't have a lot of things to to still figure out in terms of implementation, but I think we have a really good basis of it and feel really good about where we're at currently. So some of our findings, uh we wanted to highlight, uh we think the city has a reasonable path and options to demonstrate compliance with state growth targets and capacity for housing. That is not to say that we don't have work to to actually make it happen and and implement it, but I do think uh we have a good path forward. Several of the strategies presented can address those local needs, uh which you'll be informed by additional data analysis. Um and some of the things that we presented earlier. Uh achieving the actual housing targets uh and define local needs will require continued planning and implementation beyond adoption of the top plan. This is a twenty year plan for the entire city. So by nature, you know, it's it's comprehensive, but also should be somewhat strategic. And really drive implementation. The housing element will be considered consistent uh with the hap. Uh and it will address all the requirements of the Growth Management Act, including recent legislation. And we also just wanted to note that several of the housing strategies reflect in some way anticipated changes or potential changes under stat state legislation. Uh things like House Bill eleven ten, which addresses middle housing in particular, uh is one that we've been tracking. Okay, so now that concludes the presentation. We have some questions. Given the capacity estimates, are there land use and housing strategies you think are not worth considering? And again, we're just looking to identify which strategies we want to include in the land use alternatives. It doesn't mean that we're endorsing them to be adopted. Um it's really uh an endorsement of further study. Um and if uh, you know, our recommendation. Uh would be to group the housing strategies that we presented tonight, some form or combination of them into a single action alternative. And then we would have a baseline alternative for comparison purposes. And then the preferred alternative could be any combination of those strategies. Think it gives us a relative simplicity and it allows us to consider that alternative relative to what what it would look like if all of those strategies were implemented. Uh does this planning commission understand the relationship between how these numbers demonstrate capacity to account for required housing allocation? And how they will peripherally benefit other community goals, things like workforce housing and local needs that we discussed tonight. And then staff in the consulting team, as I said, would recommend two alternatives. And I think I already kind of addressed that uh last bullet. And then finally, does the planning commission have any final feedback on the combination of these strategies? Before I turn it back over to Chair Bachman, uh just want to dilate next steps. We'll develop land use alternatives uh following input from the council and commission. We got input from the come out commission or sorry, got input from the council on Tuesday and uh we're here with you tonight. We will be completing the housing uh analysis to meet the requirements for GMA and to help further refine local needs. And then we'll be back to review land use alternatives with you in May. So thanks for the opportunity and I'll turn it back over to Chair Bachman.
Thanks, Jeff. That's uh, that's a lot, actually. Okay, I guess I will open it up for questions that folks might have. Who wants to ask some questions? And I will point out that we've once again run ourselves up pretty close to the end, so we'll need to keep track of the time and extend the meeting if necessary. Okay. Let's start on the end again.
I was very busy kind of making a note to myself as I see those numbers. Let's go through quickly some of them and kind of have a better understanding. We're talking about the combined capacity and then target year and the total needs. Can we define these terms? For instance, target year, I heard that we're looking at the next twenty years. Is that a target year for housing? Right?
Yeah. That's correct. The growth target comes from King County and that um is a requirement for getting our plan certified. That we have to demonstrate that we have the capacity uh to basically accommodate those growth targets. Local needs would be in addition to those and and certainly we can plan for those, but they're not um mandates from the state and the region in the same way. So we have a little bit more flexibility.
And that matches with the PSRC target here or the twenty twenty plan, twenty twenty five plan? What is the target? P- PSRC?
Vision twenty, vision twenty fifty.
Region Council. There's a twenty twenty five, right?
Uh PSRCs is vision twenty fifty. So that, yeah, they're they're they look out a little farther. Um however, uh King County is. There's there's multiple different years. The one we're most concerned with is the uh Growth Management Act Planning Horizon through twenty twenty four. Or excuse me, twenty forty four, which is twenty years out from plan adoption in twenty twenty four.
I saw one of the bars showing the total needs on the low was thirty two seventy nine and the high was thirty eight fifty seven. These numbers are assuming that we don't make make any change as far as the densities and as far as any change in the land use or zoning. What is this, these these numbers as far as the needs based on what kind of scenarios? I think that towards the end of the slide presentation.
Yeah, let me, let me pull it back up for you. Okay, let me share my screen.
Right there.
Yep. So these are the updated capacity estimates, not the targets. So what this is saying is if we increase density within the centers, all of which were identified as redevelopable by the King County Buildable Lands work. We would uh essentially have a capacity of between thirty two seventy nine and thirty eight fifty seven. So these are not the targets. These are just how much could theoretically be built uh in these areas based on the changing land use policy and regulatory updates.
How about that capacity forty eight twenty six on the low and sixty one seventy nine?
Yep, it's just the sum of these bottom numbers and the sum of the top numbers.
Um I'm su- I'm sure that you're familiar with the term uh TOD, Transit Orient Development. As a part of presentation, I heard quickly going over the uh King County Metro Park and Ride. Has there been looked at that as a possibility as a TOD site and put some affordable housing there?
Uh yes, that's that was identified as one of our bonus parcels.
I didn't hear that.
And uh my understanding is, uh understanding is King County is actually going through an active process of of looking at the park and rides and and perhaps considering other uses. So I think the timing is really good for that conversation and uh we hope to have that in the near future.
Have you also looked at the shopping center in uh the small one in uh Klahani as a possible site?
Yes.
How about Inglewood? How about Inglewood Safeway? How about Pine Lake? Uh these are the up, these are the sites that we seriously should be looking at and possibly talk to. Either Sound Transit or King County Metro as a possible site for some kind of June development.
Yes, exactly. And that's that's what that Thornton Place development was. It was an old King County site. They included a park and a park and ride in the redevelopment, which. We wouldn't necessarily have to be done depending on the needs, but there is a uh a number of affordable units uh that were developed as part of that as well. If you look at the um. This map here, these are all the centers that we included. So Town Center, Inglewood, Pine Lake, Klahani, and then the smaller center on East Lakes, Mammish Parkway.
In your presentation, you made the reference to the PRD. I'm familiar with the PUD. Is there any difference between PRD and PUD?
They're pretty similar. PUD typically means that there's likely a commercial component, whereas PRD typically means it's mostly residential, but they're somewhat synonymous terms.
Thanks very much.
Okay, who else? Go ahead, Commissioner Bosworth.
Thank you. All right. I have a suggestion for your bonus parcels, maybe underused parcels, just because bonus. I think that could take someone going in like a not great direction. So underused parcels. The, in terms of things to sort of emphasize and de-emphasize, I really like. You know, th- there seems to be a lot of uh possibility around the centers and cottages. And I want to say, a few months ago, uh someone from staff provided us some resources and uh like a map. Where you could go around and some of that was cottage parcels. And so it led me to the website of one of the developers. And it was just, it was very interesting to read. There are developers that cater to um making obviously cottage sites. But the way they wrote it was they wanted to, they cared about what the people wanted the land to become. And so it was just a nice story. And so, you know, uh getting some more of that out of there, it just seems, it seems like that would match some of the. What folks in Sammish might like to do versus just selling it to. You know, what we're making now. And so I would de-emphasize the planned developments, because it just doesn't seem like we have a lot of space for that. And or that's what we're already doing that people don't really like. And then ADUs, uh again, I don't have anything against them. It seems like you could throw up a policy with all the plans and stuff, but again, it doesn't seem like they're being used or taken advantage of. So wouldn't want to spend a lot, a lot of time on that, but like have it on the side if people, if it suddenly became popular, bring it back in. And then I had a question about the neighborhood centers in terms of like parking, the way that you envision those, are they just sort of? Unit uh commercial that's kind of like on corners where you don't have to do a lot with parking?
Yep.
Is that kind of the idea?
Yeah, I think again, there could be different classifications of centers, but if you're talking about these small neighborhood centers, kind of like the example I showed on Bainbridge that. Yeah, if you had a, you know, a decent connected street network and on-street parking, you could allow some short-term parking without impacting residential neighborhoods. And again, thinking that they would mostly be small scale and, you know, wouldn't require a large offsite, you know, off-street parking facilities. But there likely would be, you know, some that would be included.
And and do those themselves include housing or is it just to encourage? Like uh those plus maybe some, a little bit of new housing around it that's a little more dense?
Yeah, I think particularly for the smaller neighborhood centers, it likely would not yield a lot of new housing and we wouldn't. We would want to make sure that it had a commercial component. So again, I think it's a community decision. I could see some uh housing component being allowed, but I think the primary strategy would be then to allow things like middle housing within proximity um to those locations.
There, there's a lot of these all over Seattle. Uh if you drive around or bike around Seattle, you'll see a lot of these just pop up out of nowhere. There's a store or there's a uh two-unit commercial space. One is a pizza place and a, you know, a a small boutique or something. Um I've seen some of them um in Seattle being redeveloped with um. With some housing added to them. So live-work units maybe or something where there's a living unit above it and there's a business downstairs. That that they, you know, but they're still very small in scale. I- if you go to Bellevue, there are some historic ones in Bellevue. However, those are much bigger in scale. They're not. Big like the scale of a true commercial center, but they're bigger than some of the ones you see in the in the more historic neighborhoods or, I don't mean historic. The older neighborhoods of Seattle. Um so it really depends on what the community wants with regard to the size of. You know, are are you looking for a, you know, a a pizza place down the road that you could walk to and have a beer and have a piece of pizza or what do you, you know, what what are you really looking for? So that that I think is where that conversation goes. And that's why we flagged this as something that we might want to take on, say in twenty five and twenty six. Because we may not have capacity to take this on with this comp plan update.
Yeah, I get that. It's just nice to see it in here, because it is, I would love to, you know, i- it would be great for the, you know, the single family neighborhoods to be able to have an option to walk somewhere. So it's it's exciting to me. So thank you.
Commissioner Briscoe?
Do we need a motion to extend?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, how about till uh eight fifty? We need public comment too.
Yes, we do. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second and extend to eight fifty. Those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed no, thank you.
All right.
Comments?
Yeah, um so I've got a lot of time now. Don't hit me. Don't hit me. No, no. Hey, uh a few things. First off, I really like the principles. And I hope that you come back from time to time to confirm that the principles are being met. I think they do a really nice job of balancing the multiple challenges that we have. And I did notice the change, I think it was the second one to some of the wording and so since the the council meeting on uh on Tuesday. So first off, you know, that's great and and good guiding light. I struggle a little bit with the capacity estimates. And I know that this is like first cut. You know, so Jeff, but if we could take like just say the the middle. Uh housing overlay as an example. And so, and and we take the quarter mile. The. The baseline showing five fifteen, is that if there are no code changes at all?
And then? Yeah, that is if there are no code changes at all, based on the parcels identified by King County that are vacant or redevelopable.
And so, so you did, and and my question was, which I think you answered, but so you've actually looked at the level of detail that says that here's available land. Uh to get to that five uh fifteen, okay.
Yes.
Then just said, okay, now we have code change. It goes to, you know, twelve units per acre or or um dwelling units. And and the calculation then is pretty simple with the the sixteen forty eight. So I'm tracking okay on that.
Yeah.
I I have to say, I was surprised at the amount of additional capacity hearing that like we're so close to being built built out. Whether it's in the um middle housing overlay or the large lot cottage units, it just, it's surprising. So. Interesting. It's amazing what happens when you've got some data. The other thing I would say that would be helpful, and I know this, I think this is just part of a process that will be, you know, kind of refining and and identifying. But it would be really helpful, I think, for me for sure, and I think for the community. When we look at what is the mandates and, you know, the analysis says we've got the capacity, what would it look like? Like, you know, would there be, you know, two, you know, one over five units that are built in Town Center and another one over in Pine Lake or? You know, just to make, and I know this would be like with a ton of assumptions and what ifs and just as a pure illustration. What it might actually look like in the city if we were to meet the the GMA requirements. As it just purely an exercise that would help the community. As it just purely an exercise that would help the community get a better sense of what all this stuff looks like, um, if we're, we're meeting those needs.
Yeah. When you say look like, do you mean like uh, maps or like actual like design graphics?
It would, well, it would be that in this portion of the Town Center, um, that we would end up with two, you know, high-rises that meet the uh, you know, the, the requirements for the, the zero to 30%.
So Jeff, if, i- if you could go up a few slides to the slides that show the projects in Town Center that are by example, because I think that's a helpful bearing. So Sky Apartments has 30 affordable units in it. So in order to get to the number of units that we have to produce in those affordability ranges, less than 80% AMI, which is 2100, we, you could, you could extrapolate that out to how many of those buildings would you need?
Yep. That, that's basically, yeah. And so there would be a page here that says, this is what it would look like. And, and it would be, you know, 10 Sky Apartment type units or buildings. So I think it would be helpful, something to consider.
We actually are planning on doing that on a couple of different levels. And I think one part of that exercise is actually taking the 2100 and making some assumptions about how it should be allocated amongst the parcels that can take it. You know, that the parcels that we've identified that would be suitable for it, along with a ratio of market rate development that's likely going to be necessary to, to offset some of the, so the costs. So we do intend to do that. And again, we don't expect that like all 2100 units of affordable housing would be built in one location. But we would actually have allocations within the different areas that would allow it to do it. And that's the, also the other benefit of a subarea plan or even a master plan. You can get really into the details in terms of, you know, additional street networks and, you know, um, building massing and, and architectural details and things like that. So there are likely to be subarea plans as a recommendation coming out of this as well. But I totally agree with you and there's some next steps we're planning to do on that.
I, I do, I'm, I'm glad to hear that because I do think part of this is communicating to the community what this would look like and making it more tangible. Because, you know, if you go through all of this level of detail, it's, it really is hard to imagine. And people will look at it in a way that will, you know, maybe be more frightening than it may actually be in reality. And the last thing is that as we progress through this, it would be helpful to get a sense of the type of code changes that would be needed to make, you know, these things a reality. And I'm, I'm, I know that that's, you know, several meetings down the road, I guess, but um, I, I understand the strategies. I, I understand now the, the capacity calculations. It's comforting to know that we would have the ability to meet the GMA requirements and allow for some other growth that meets the internal needs. And how we start to convert that into things that, you know, we could see and, and then build to is, is I think, you know, obviously some of the next steps. So this is the comments I've got.
Thank you.
Mr. Bachman?
Commissioner Briscoe must have been reading my notes. Um, so yeah, I'm right there with him. Um, Bellevue, Redmond, they've really gone through this change where they've gone from surface parking lots, setback stores, strip malls to five-over-one, street-level commercial. We don't have any of that here. Well, little bit in Town Center, but it's, it's not on the scale that we might get if we got, replaced a gas station on a corner with a couple hundred apartments. So having those renderings of a site, um, I think would be really valuable and, and the outreach, um, you know, we've seen way before I was on commission, the reaction from the public when there's a big change like at the Jarvis property. And be ready for that or get out in front of it. So the whole mixed-use walkable change things coming here, how do we communicate that and manage that with our community? It's not going to happen all at once, but once the ball starts rolling, um, it'll go. Totem Lake is kind of a hy- more hybrid style. Um, I don't know. Anyway, people are used to driving to QFC or Safeway and getting out in a surface lot and going in the grocery store. And so going in an underground garage to go to the grocery store is, yeah, it's a bit of a change. And then of course, the details of all the development regulations that are going to have to be changed or modified is pretty significant, I think. You know, we've got lot coverage, critical areas, aquifer recharge basins, open space retention, tree retention. And there's probably steep slopes, earthquake, there's more, but a lot of, lot of work in the weeds. But otherwise, I really liked the presentation and, and uh, and the principles, I think are binders to the, to the plan. Thanks.
Commissioner Chuck Brownie?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a couple of questions. Uh, in your strategies to local needs, um, slide, I forgot the slide number. Uh, you've shown, and, no, no, the, the one which you had the graph which showed the low to the desired, or, yeah, that one, yes. Um, for this capacity, how, uh, did I hear you right when you mentioned that, uh, we were not going the approach of uh, having a citywide plan, but more of a community, uh, by community plan? Did I hear that right?
Well, what I was saying, I, if you're referring to what I think you are, I, I was mentioning that there could be more specific planning or subarea plans for, for some of these areas that would go beyond the comp plan to address in more detail things like aesthetics and development patterns and, and um, you know, community desires for how these things would look and feel. I'm not, I'm not sure if I got that right, but um, if I didn't, happy to.
No, uh, that's great. That clarified it because I was thinking that if you was, if you, uh, from what you're saying, it sounds like it is something that, uh, that goes on top of what we have as a citywide plan. Uh, to also address the individual community, what community needs. And if that's the case, that's great because I was thinking the gap towards uh, the desired uh, is so high that how do we do that without having a citywide plan? So I think you answered that question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the second thing I had was that you have also mentioned the words on House, House Bill 1110, 1245, and 1337. Though they have not yet been passed, um, what kind of an impact would it have? I mean, you know, mathematics is, I'm a student of mathematics and it's a, it's a great humbler. Uh, it always teaches us probability can go either way. What happens if things change in that? Do you have contingency plans in, in those cases? Or is this predicated on assuming that they would, that they would go through?
Yeah. Um, you know, we're certainly tracking it. And I, as I said earlier, um, some of the strategies, like the middle housing strategy, are pretty similar to, to um, some of what's being proposed. But uh, at some point, if that passes in the near future, we would go through a similar exercise as we're doing here to, to look at the impacts. And, you know, while it does have a relatively simplistic regulatory requirement of, say, numbers of units for lot, there's also things like development standards, storm water requirements, parking requirements and so on and so forth that, you know, may not go away and, and could also still limit development. So uh, should that pass, you could expect us uh, to be back with the commission talking in more detail about what those impacts would be.
Got it. And look forward to that discussion. Thank you so much. Thanks, Chair.
I had a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Um, first, my suggestion for the name on the bonus parcels, um, picking some parlance from federal levels. Let's call them faith-based parcels. Okay. That, that, that fell flat. So, um, on a more serious note, I do think one of the things I would just point out to be careful of is recognize that people will likely do exactly what I did when you look at these maps. Um, you start to read more detail into them than really exists. And so I immediately started zooming in to where my house is and started thinking about how that's going to affect my neighborhood. I just think it's important to recognize that that's what people will do. So when you publish something and people see it, you know, you may know that the accuracy is a certain level, but people will do that. They will want to know, how is this, you know, am I in the green area? Am I in the dark blue area? And recognizing that that's what people will do is kind of an important thing when you start to socialize some of this. One of my questions and my written questions that I still am curious about is strategically, will we talk about this as, um, some of these things are very much transit oriented? So will we talk about this as, as housing following transit or transit following housing? You know, we, a lot of the two, stuff that's shown along 228th makes the presumption that there's transit along 228th. And there's, I don't even know what it is now, two bus lines, maybe it's three that run along 228th sort of some of the time.
Yeah.
And, and so you're making a fairly big assumption about mapping that out as being within a quarter mile, eighth mile, whatever it is of transit. But the transit's not really there yet. Or are we saying we believe it will come and we're gonna, we're gonna campaign for that? And so then it makes more sense. Or are we saying we're gonna create a map that develops some locations where more dense housing can occur and assume that that'll help us in getting more transit? You know, which way does it go? Egg or chicken? Chicken or egg?
Yeah. It's such a good question. Um, and one that I did respond in writing, I'm not sure if you got it yet, but um, there is a written response which I'll kind of go through now. And I think, you know, where we are today, we have a certain level of transit. And so the estimates and, and capacity estimates we provide on, like the middle housing overlay, you know, just simply are responsive to where transit is today. But it is sort of future-forward in the sense that um, where uh, transit goes in the future would, would then um, expand that, that overlay. The city is also undergoing a transit plan right now, um, which is exciting and will potentially inform our work as well. And then I think, uh, you know, things like the new neighborhood centers, um, and if we start to make significant land use changes, that would make uh, transit more uh, useful, then I think we would look to kind of do the opposite and integrate transit services where we think there's going to be more intense development that would support it. So I think it's a little bit of both, but at this point, we're primarily planning for what we have. And also we'll be coordinating with the, the transit plan, which is just kicked off.
So my third um, sort of comment question is maybe a, maybe just a suggestion is that in, in a similar fashion, I really think that when we talk about this as we move forward, I'd really like to see some associated infrastructure considerations. Because, so, so two things. One is just from a practical standpoint, we have to be careful about water capacity and sewer capacity and some of those kind of things. But in an also non-practical capacity, while the maybe leadership of the community has changed, there's still many people out there that are concerned about the impact to their neighborhood and the impact to the city of bringing 3,000 new, 6,000 new residents in over the next 15 or 20 years. And I don't think we should ignore that because it's a valid concern to at least talk about. And if the answer is, which I think is kind of what it is, we're going to develop a plan, but we're going to acknowledge that we have to make changes to our infrastructure to keep up. And we're going to talk about that openly. That's good. Um, but we shouldn't ignore it as we talk through this, this exact level of detail here. And acknowledge that, you know, some of these things have greater impact on the infrastructure, particularly the, the roads and the traffic than um, some other things do. I think it's just important to have that be part of the conversation.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. And that will happen um, in several, uh, or a few different spots in the plan. So once we get the alternatives uh, in place, uh, we will do some uh, look at transportation and capital facilities. That will help inform the selection of the preferred alternative. And then under the Growth Management Act, we're required to have uh, you know, uh, transportation improvements, capital facilities to support the land use plan. We have to demonstrate a financial plan. In order to fund it, we have a, a subconsultant on our team specifically to help us with someone I, I work with frequently on capital facilities planning. And, you know, in order to get certified, you know, we have to be able to demonstrate that we can serve these. Otherwise, we have to rethink our land use plan. So absolutely agree and, you know, just want to make it clear to the community that, uh, that's an important next step for us.
I, I also want to add to that, that we're, we're kind of at the crossroads right now. In order for us to do outreach to our, our service providers and to talk to our transportation planners and engineers and to talk to our stormwater planners and engineers, we first need to have an idea around what it is we're looking at. So until we get past this conversation, we haven't had a full understanding of that and direction on that. So we do have complete outreach plan to reach out to the school districts, to reach out to the water and sewer districts, to, you know, work internally with our, our internal service providers, to, you know, loo- look at parks facilities, adequacy of all these things that are all different elements of the comp plan, which goes back to my opening comment tonight about why we can't develop a housing plan absent looking at all these other things. So tha- that's one of the reasons why you've heard us say, well, hold on, let's wait till we get to the housing element because we need to consider housing in concert with all of the other components of the commu- of building a community that go along with that.
And I would say I'm confident we'll do all of that. And it's good to say it out loud on a regular basis so people can be comfortable.
Remind ourselves repeatedly of that, yes.
The last comment before we have to extend again is um, one of the things I will be definitely looking for and concerned with, and this will probably get into more of when we get into even greater detail, but these feel like big, potential big changes for this city. And big changes can have unintended consequences if we don't keep our eye on the ball. So I think it's really important to be talking about and thinking about unintended consequences. You know, whether that's a, a neighborhood center or, or more high-rise, uh, mid-rise, sorry, stuff in Town Center. What are the consequences? What are the unintended things that we're not thinking about? Because we've all gotten so used to having this conversation with each other over and over. Um, let's just pay really close attention to what things could happen that we never intended. But somebody who owns a piece of land says, hey, well, I can, I can do this. And yeah, they probably can, and we just didn't think of it. So let's pay close attention to that. I certainly will be. All right. Can somebody give us a little extension here?
I move that we extend to 9:05.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second, extend to 9:05. I know everybody's excited. So all those in favor say aye. Aye? Both no? Okay. Any more comments? My friend has a few more comments down there. Go ahead.
Again, I'm looking at my note and there was something that kind of caught my eyes again. ADUs. I was really shocked to see that number of eligible parcels in a city is 18,000. And the target, the base is 120. These are your numbers. Base is 20, modest is 240, and a target is 927. How, David, how many dwelling units do we have in the city now? I hear 22,000, wasn't it?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay. So we're saying that out of 22,000 dwelling unit, over 18,000 parcels available for ADUs?
Now, a lot of that has to do with a DADU versus a ADU, right? So an internal ADU, you could easily convert your home and have an attached internal ADU versus a detached ADU. So I, this does not discern which type that is. We're not saying that 18,000 units could have detached accessory dwelling units as far as I'm aware. So I think it's important to consider there are different types of accessory dwelling units, um, detached and, and attached, internal to the home.
And then back to that bar chart that shows the combined capacity of the maximum 6179, compare that with the affordable housing mandate of 2100. So one-third of the capacity in the future would have to be affordable housing? Can I draw that conclusion? 61 versus 2,000?
In that, in that location, in these combined locations, which are where you can do mid-rise housing, that's true. But then this is, this is sort of different. This is more market slash perhaps moderately affordable units to address local needs.
But the conclusion, is that correct or not? 61 versus 2,000? One-third of the total capacity?
Yeah, for, for the centers and for affordable and, and market rate units.
And David, I, I have some reservation about that, what I'm hearing, that we should be looking at the land use first. be looking at the land use first before looking at the transportation. This is a perfect example of chicken and egg. If you will go ahead and assume a plan and get it approved by all parties involved, but then not having the infrastructure to support it, you got to go back to the drawing board and change your land use. So you got to go back and forth and see, okay, this is the land use and consequences of this land use will require so much of investment in infrastructure. Let me give you an example. And I've said a number of times to the city council, look at the 228, a good part of it, from Inglewood Shopping Center all the way to the 202, that right now, if I looked, if I'm not mistaken, 25% of the total traffic come to the city is, is using that 228 to reach to the Redmond and Point beyond. That roadway has not changed since the incorporation of the city. Remember that. City was incorporated and at that time I was even a city resident in 1999. That roadway hasn't changed its capacity. So with that in mind and knowing that a lot of people for the next and foreseeable future, they're going to be driving to work. But that roadway has the same capacity as back then. The city population was 20,000. Right now it's 60,000. How are we going to look at some of these major land use changes and adding three, four, five thousand dwelling units without looking at the infrastructure to support that?
So I would, I would add some clarity to that, that the city's population hasn't gone from 20,000 to 60,000, that a large portion of that increase in population was due to annexation and those units were already there. So you can take that, that there have been a large number of units added, however. Um, and there has been an increase in density and increase in traffic on cities' roads. Um, but I, I, I believe that we have to look at land use and transportation infrastructure together. I'm not saying one should go before the other, but I think you have to look at them together to get an understanding about what is possible on both sides. Um, for example, if, if we want to supplement our transportation network with transit, we have to have density to support that. But in order to get the density, you have to have transit. So, so how do we, and where are the guarantees that you will get transit? And how do you build ridership? My understanding is that in order to build ridership, you have to get the density, you have to have the riders. And then, then, and then the, the, the service provider is willing to increase the, the routes and the numbers of, numbers of trips on those routes, right? Um, so those are the types of things that we are, we're looking at. You know, fortunately the city is doing a transit plan. Um, and I, I think that that will be really helpful to understand. There are also some major amenities that are changing from, from the city's incorporation. For example, the addition of, um, a Marymore Park and Ride. Um, there have been other things that have changed, such as the Issaquah Highlands Park and Ride has come online since the city's incorporation. Um, there is a now almost finished, um, and this is peripheral. It's not a hundred percent related to car trips, but the East Lake Sammamish Trail provides a, an amazing alternative commute route for people who want to ride bikes and e-bikes and things like that. And that is something that King County has planned for in the design of that facility. Um, there are other factors that are, are being added to the network and the, the capacity. So it's up to us to look at how to, to connect those, to stitch those together to provide for varying modes of, of transportation, um, and, and look for areas where we can make cost effective improvements in capacity. I, you know, you, I believe you're a transportation engineer and, and you probably, I don't know whether you would agree with me that adding lanes doesn't always add capacity. Um, there's a whole host of other things that goes along with that. So, so we need to consider that as well in our, in our efforts going forward. And I, I'm very curious, you know, your thoughts as we progress in how we make all these things work together. So thank you for that comment.
Book.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Jeff, for hanging in there with us.
Pleasure.
Anybody in the room here as well? Thank you. Okay, let's do a gender-related public comment. Who would like to make public comments? Really, really just, really actually just about our discussion right here that we just had?
Comes with a free drink. Hi, Mary Victor, Sammamish, 22 years. Um, really great inputs, discussion, um, and really good questions. Uh, so I did send in public comment to the city council meeting, which was just earlier this week, and I hope that those comments will be taken. I had made comments, I believe, on your principles 468, 2468. Um, and I hope that those will be taken or put into a thing because I don't want to have to review them here. Um, I'm gonna, and then on the highest priority thing, the number one thing we need to do is use our centers. Um, I believe that you've done the numbers correctly. If we have to build 2100 of some sort of affordable homes, then we need about, I mean, if it was 10%, you need 21,000 new houses and you're not going to do that. But 30% affordability, so 2100 is one third of 7,000. Um, so the place to put that is town center. There's a thing called Northeast Forest Street. That's a project that started in 2002 and it got finished in 2020. And maybe you've driven it and seen the new art sculpture in the little traffic circle roundabouts. Um, I also go to the water district meetings about three times a month. I've been doing that since 2015. The number of ERUs, which is equivalent residence units that they have, whenever you have a multifamily house, it requires less than a regular single family does. They have like numbers like 13,000 and stuff. So town center, we paid for with our money. I was at the meeting where they voted for it and they said, we have to do this because if we don't, we're going to lose $5 million in grant money. I looked on the website for that project and it was about 13, 14,000. I think it might've ended up higher, like 15 or 20. But we've paid for that. It's like a fruit bowl or an empty train car sitting there waiting for the, the things to go in. And if people live there and if they live in apartments like Sky Apartment is 30%, so there's 30 units out of 96 dwelling units per acre, um, uh, or 96 dwelling units. Um, those people don't necessarily have kids. They're young adults or they're, they work for the water district. They don't have kids or they don't have to commute anymore or they're not sending people to school or they're seniors who are downsizing or something into it. And when you do that, like the Plateau 120, you just don't have the same population you do with these giant single family homes. So a lot of the transportation, if you're using a center area right next to the city hall, right on the schools corridor, right in roads that are already built, you're not going to be adding a ton of traffic going off. And I do agree with what Director Pyle just said. Um, I also noticed on East Lake Sammamish Parkway, although we haven't fixed the road, the construction that was done at that intersection just outside of the city where it meets Marymore Park, that tends to flow a lot better now, at least when I drive it. So there have been things improved and there are bus systems, but what we need is not only transit oriented development, but we need the transit to go with it. And we do have a place to put the houses. Also, if you're stacking units, um, like if you're taking a four-story building or five-story building, your tax density is higher. So you're not taxing all your single family homes more. You're taxing that same square foot four, five, six, seven times how tall it is. It's got less emissions. It's better for climate. It's better for walkability. Um, there are co-housing projects that you can do. Um, so using the centers is what we really need to do. And we really do need to have the density. And the way to get that density is you need to have the mid-rise and it's already zoned there. So in priority of all the things that to look at, the centers are the way to go. And I don't mean down by Monahan Mill where the 7-Eleven used to be, that you're going to rip that out and put a whole bunch of stuff there because those people don't have transit. You need to do it at town center. The other thing I will say is 228th is getting repaved right now. I don't know if you've tried to drive that, but it's relatively challenging. I went to the store today and had to park over here and walk over there and all that stuff. There's a lot of people that don't like that amount of disruption. The first thing you shouldn't do is go to Kohani, which is, was a second master plan community and go rip that up right away. Cause there's a lot of people that like that. The centers that are working, let's leave them. They'll develop over time. And, um, the areas in the, like, um, Chair Boffman talked about where they're the little puzzle pieces and you're like looking where you are, those will happen over time. Like people don't want to say, oh, we need more housing. I want my neighborhood to change a whole bunch right now. Where we need to put that is in the centers first. And then to, um, what John Backman had talked about, um, on the maps, I did put in a thing for maps, like all the critical areas, the wetlands, the streams, the steep slopes and all those, those need to go on the maps. Otherwise the maps are misleading. And I know, um, Councilmember Pam Stewart, I also talked about the red and green colors. Those are very hard to read. I do have red, green color blindness in my family. And, um, so they should change some of that. So there should be a lot of changes that were, uh, talked about at the city council meeting that weren't put in here necessarily. And I hope they'll be incorporated. And please, please, I know I send long emails. You don't need to put the whole thing in, but like little things, either do them or put them in a matrix. Don't ignore them because it's really annoying to have to bring them up a whole bunch of times. And you know, I talk a lot anyway. Um, and there are people like Paul Stick, like the amount of stormwater strategy I've done for the last eight years, Paul Stickney's been doing his stuff for housing a year and a half longer than me. So he's almost at a decade of housing. So he's like the little library of Congress for things for housing. Um, and the bonus parcels, uh, I think it's great to do a name. I liked the underused. I kind of thought supplements, but then it sounds like you have more. They are all institutionally owned, but that's not a cool name. I like the facebait thing, but I think we should think about that because I think it's a very creative way to do it. And if you're a church and you have, you know, things that aren't getting used, like the Lutheran one across, I think they have space, um, and they can build and they can help community. It's, it's built in the, when what the owner has, it's part of their use and part of their mission in life. And, um, Central Washington and like the Park and Ride, I think are other good places too. So I really like that one. Um, I forget if TDRs are part of this, but you need to do TDRs. There are some things that are getting done with the comp plan, like the critical areas and things that those will get done. There's a lot of things happening, um, together. Uh, and I'm almost out of time. Um, I really like, I think it's really great that we do have the consultants that we do. Paul Stickney in the earlier comment had said, um, Elliot and that company, and his company, how long they've been with the city. Um, Jeff with Framework, he's been doing a lot for our city. I think we're paying him over a million dollars to do multiple projects this year. He's awesome. He's so up to date on things. He even changed the housing action strategies to the new name, Housing Diversity, Diversification Toolkit, when he did his presentation. So I'm hopeful that the changes that are talked about, the questions, all the points everybody made, that those will get carried for. So they'll be integrated next time so we can look at the new things. So I think you guys do a really awesome job. Thanks for everybody's involvement. I do trust the process. It makes things better. I know it's hard to listen, but sometimes it's even harder to talk too. So thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Do we have anyone online?
We have one hand raised, Mr. Stickney. I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Sure. Would someone give us enough time for Paul to do his public comment?
Motion to extend.
Another five minutes?
We need seven minutes, so.
Make up a number. It won't matter.
Okay, nine, 9:15.
Okay. I heard a move in second to extend to 9:15. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you.
Howdy, planning ministers. Um, Paul Stickney here. I'm not going to need all my time. I only have a few things tonight. Uh, I went to the Redmond City Council meeting on the 28th. I was there back in 2017 when they talked about state route, uh, 202, which is still a potential roundabout to help with that choke point. But one of the council members was asked, what is one of the, the lessons learned? And he said that the most important, and I think his name is Robert Conrad, but I don't know that I have that name right. He said the most important thing to him would have been to have a massing model to not only show the public, but to understand how especially in centers, buildings would, would interrelate to themselves rather than having upset people who think they're going to have a view that, you know, goes away. But that's an interesting topic for a larger project, not for a smaller one. On Sky Apartments, I'm not positive I have this right, but I know they have, well, I am sure of one thing. They have 159 apartments there, but I think there are 30 affordable housing to the 159. I don't think it's 30 to 96. If that's the case, that's about a 19%. And I know that Sky, I don't have all the numbers, but I know TRF used the city, uh, bonus pool that used market rate houses and, and affordable mix. But here's my main point. In Sammamish, I believe that most of the, of the affordable units created have been at 80% AMI. Redmond, by the way, over the last several years, their AMI on a one to 10 basis was at, uh, um, 60% AMI. But here's my question. I know this is wrong, but I want to say it because it's close. If you have to do, or you have inclusionary zoning of one unit at 80% AMI out of every 10 right now, what is the cost to go to 50 or 30%? It's probably significant. I just did some quick math. If you were doing a townhouse projects where, where there was ownership, if a price was 800,000 in the future in Sammamish, 80% would be 640, 50% 400 and 30% 240. This isn't a perfect example, but it's meant to ask for the consultant and others that are going to put together rough metrics and tables, what's the market rate to 30%? What's the market rate to 50%? And what's the market rate to 80%? I think that should be factored in because these are levels of affordability. Our community hasn't built too many of these, uh, in the past, even though we've had targets without teeth, uh, to build them. But, uh, just some thoughts to consider. And there, did that in only three minutes. All right. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? Julian?
No more hands raised.
All right. Anything else from staff this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, would someone move to adjourn? Oh, let me just remind you to take a look at the calendar and keep your eye on the email because there are a couple little things going to change. So please do that. Someone move to adjourn, please?
I'll move to adjourn second.
It's been moving secondly adjourned for the evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you, everybody. See you in a couple of weeks.